President there. And I can echo the same sentiments about the noise. I know they've had it worse. Because their building is a budding. It's right next to that, the 134 site. But we live across from there and you know, we've heard the noise on the roof. There's been a restaurant that recently opened, I think in the fall of last year, called the Elite Restaurant, and they have music on the roof. Since the start and it's been disastrous. It's been disastrous and there's been over 1,000 311 complaints. We've been working with the 90th precinct to, when we had a mediation meeting. But you know, there's families living there and it's just, it's just a very difficult scenario. So to have another venue coming in and to know that it's a 250 seat restaurant with rooftop and lot music, that's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really bad for the neighborhood. As far as in terms of sound, we have an end and you know, garbage. We have garbage on the streets from the customers. We have double parking. It's, it's really, it's really changed the dynamics of the neighborhood. So I'm hoping that you would reconsider or that there is a national plan in place, you know, should things get out of control. But you know, based on the last previous occupants, you know, we'd like to see, you know, this, this not approved. I also know that there's a liquor license law, it's called the 500 foot rule. And I think that the last guest also alluded to it. Where I think you all know about it. So I was wanting, wanted to find out more information. Why is this site even being considered when we have all these businesses right next to each other?
Okay, your time is up.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I'm looking for the other people who've signed up to speak about liquor licenses. I don't see James Walker on the list. He had signed up, but he's not appearing. Stefan Edwards, Thomas. Shane Spencer. Shane. Shane, you're unmuted. Shane. Shane Spencer. Shane, you're unmuted.
I don't know how to unmute.
You're unmuted, you just need to speak.
Hello?
Can you speak? You're unmuted.
Yes, we hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you. Speak Shane. Shane?
I know Shane Spencer, I, I can call him now if you want. Hello?
Yes, yes.
Why are so many people having trouble this evening? Can we move on and come back to Shane?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Could you hear me now?
Who is this?
I don't know what's going on.
We hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hello, sorry about that. My name is Shane Spencer and I live at what is technically 50 Greenpoint. We often know it as 80 West Street. My, I'm here to speak about my opposition for the liquor license for 66 Greenpoint Avenue. This, we, I went to the bill to speak to the business owner. He is looking to have an establishment there that would stay open till 4:00 AM. That just will not work for our, for our neighborhood at this time. There are myself included about 50, about, sorry. 25 or so signatures I have on a petition so far and more coming. Who are in opposition of this liquor license. So we are still working on collecting some more signatures, but there are so many different reasons why we do not want a venue of this particular establishment coming here. It's gonna be way too loud. Parking is definitely not adequate in this particular, in this particular area for a venue that large. And we, there is no definite solution for all the trash that would be here, this particular area. So I am definitely pro-business, but just not pro music venue slash comedy club in my backyard. Thank you.
At this time, it's all I see on the list for the, for the public session here.
Thank you so much, Marie.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes.
You hear me, Sonia?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 79 Quay Street. An application submitted by Quay Street Plaza. Is there anyone here to present on that item? 79 Quay Street? Is there anyone here to speak on 79 Quay Street? Next item on the agenda is Cooper Park Commons. Is there anybody here to speak on that item?
Yes, yes, we are. This is Frank Lang from St. Nick's Alliance. Hello, everybody. I have with me quite a few people. Mostly here to answer questions. But I think we want to be able to share our screen for the community board. Max, are you going to, Max Aaron, are you going to be the one doing the deck?
Yep, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, if somebody, okay. Max can share, get permission to share his screen. And then we could start the presentation to everybody.
I think we also had one member of our group that is currently joined as an attendee.
Right.
That we'd like to make a panelist if possible.
Her name is Jody Rudin, R U D I N. I think she's an attendee.
Max, are you the presenter?
I am, yes.
Okay. It's, it's, it's signing up for you.
I see.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, maybe I'll just. Maybe want to enlarge it, Max.
Let me see what I can do.
Let me start while you do that and. Hi, everybody, this is, my name is Frank Lang. I'm the director of housing for St. Nick's Alliance. Thank you all for your patience. We're here to present the development plans for the former Greenpoint Hospital. With us from the city, we have Lynn Zhang from HPD Planning. We have Brian Shea from the Department of Homeless Services. I'm looking to see, we have Aaron Buchanan from HPD. And I apologize for any other tons from the city that I didn't have, maybe a Brian when we get there. From the development team, we have Max Aaron from Hudson Companies and Michael Allhausen from Hudson Companies. And hopefully Jody Rudin from Project Renewal. Will join us shortly. I just wanted to say, we came in April to the community board. Because we wanted to make sure that there could be some larger presentation and time for the, the community board members to see this project and start raising questions. Of course, Community Board One has been a consistent supporter of the community plan, which was developed by the Greenpoint Renaissance Enterprise Corporation, the Coalition of Community Residents and Organizations. And has been advocating about the hospital for about 40 years now. The development team consisting of St. Nick's Alliance, Hudson Companies, and Project Renewal was designated by HPD in 2018 to be the developer of the site. And it was done because we really are adhering as well as we can to that community plan and working to get input from the community all through the process. So we'd like to turn it over to my teammate Max and others to do the presentation. And then we'd be delighted to answer questions. This is the official public ULER for the project, which is the disposition and rezoning ULER.
Thank you, Frank. And I think our partners at HPD are gonna kick us off with the first few slides. So I'll let Aaron and Lynn have the floor.
Thank you, Max. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
All right, thanks. So good evening. My name's Erin Buchanan and I'm from the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I'm gonna get us started tonight before turning it back over to the team. So as you know, Cooper Park Commons is a long awaited project that proposes to redevelop a large partially vacant city owned site in East Williamsburg into new buildings, all affordable to extremely low and low income New Yorkers. The project proposes two new affordable housing buildings. One renovated affordable housing building for low income seniors. The renovation and onsite relocation of the existing homeless shelter, community facility and commercial space. And also publicly accessible open space serving the future tenants and nearby residents. So the ULER application for this project was recently certified on June 21st. And HPD, along with the sponsor Massoth Manager LLC, are the applicants. Cooper Park Commons was designated to St. Nick's Alliance, Hudson Companies, and Project Renewal under HPD's 2017 request for expressions of interest for the redevelopment of the Greenpoint Hospital campus. This ULER application is seeking approvals for urban development action area project designation and project approval and the disposition of city owned property. A zoning map amendment to rezone block 2885 from R6 to R72 and R72C24 zoning districts. A zoning text amendment to designate block 2885 as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. A special permit to establish a large scale general development special permit to modify height and setback regulations and also distance between building regulations. And finally, disposition approval to modify a specified community facility use. Approved in a prior ULER for lot 10 to permit and continue general community facility uses there. You can go ahead, Max. The project area is a one block area between Massoth Avenue, Kingsland Avenue, Jackson Street, and Double Boys Avenue in CB1. A formerly mapped portion of Skilman Avenue runs through the center of the block. Much of the surrounding area includes a wide range of land uses, including one and two family residences, elevator apartment buildings, local retail, manufacturing uses, and public open spaces. Directly to the east and north of the project area is the 700 unit New York City Housing Authority Cooper Park Houses. Commercial uses in the area are located along Kingsland Avenue and Metropolitan Avenue. And these include food stores, coffee shops, medical offices, laundromats, delis, restaurants. The blocks to the east of Cooper Park Houses contain a concentration of industrial and manufacturing uses that are part of the North Brooklyn IDZ. And public facility uses in the area include the existing 200 bed Barbara Climan residence on the project area. Directly to the south of the site is Cooper Park, which is a 6.4 acre mapped public park. And a few green thumb gardens in the area include Red Shed Garden west of the project area and Orient Grove Garden south of the project area. And Frost Playground is located on the Cooper Park Houses campus. The area is served by public transit, including the Graham Avenue stop on the L, about four blocks from the site and also the B24 bus running along Kingsland Avenue. How you, Max? The project proposes redevelopment of block 2885 into two new buildings and the renovation of two existing buildings. Will contain approximately 553 100% affordable rental units plus three units for supers and the onsite replacement of the 200 bed homeless shelter. Proposed to be used for a cafe, health clinic, job and workforce center, and a senior center. And some amenities in the buildings will include bike storage, fitness rooms, laundry rooms, resident recreation amounts, social services, private courtrooms, terraces for tenants, and approximately 1.6 acres of landscaped public open spaces. So now I will turn it back over to Max and the team for a more detailed overview of their work and also the building design.
Erin, and thank you Frank for that overview and introduction. We'll now go into a little bit of a deeper exploration of the project. I think by now, most folks are familiar with the team. But as Frank mentioned, we were really grateful to be designated by HPD through the RFEI process in 2018. St. Nick's obviously has a really long history of advocating for the redevelopment of the site. And it's been so instrumental in getting us to this point. Hudson Companies has also been active in this community, developing affordable housing since the 80s, particularly under the New Homes Program, building affordable housing co-ops in North Brooklyn. And we are a housing developer here in the city with, with a real focus on affordable housing and a lasting commitment to sustainability. And we're joined by Project Renewal on our team. And we feel so grateful to have such a fantastic partner focusing on the shelter redevelopment component of this project. Project Renewal is one of the oldest and most established providers of not only housing for those experiencing homelessness, but also a really robust array of services that they're going to bring to the site. So I won't read this mission statement, but, but again, you know, we really recognize that the decades of advocacy and activism that have gone into getting us to this point. And you know, we recognize that this is just the latest stage in a long process to see this site restored as the community anchor that it once was and an opportunity to provide a set of services and uses to this community that are updated to the needs that are most pressing today, that we've really heard from community members. Since we began our involvement with this process in 2018, and I know St. Nick's has been involved in those conversations for years and years before. So we really appreciate all of that feedback. We're grateful for the conversations we've had up to this point. We're here to continue those conversations, but we think that we have a project that really reflects what we've heard from this community.
First, first step.
So I think most people here are probably pretty familiar with this site. But just to ensure that everybody is, this is a close up of the block that is subject to the ULER action. So shown in yellow is the whole block, which is subject to the rezoning and land use changes. And then in orange is block 2885 lot one, which Aaron referred to. And that is the, sorry, the lot that will actually be subject to redevelopment. I'm hearing some additional conversations in the background. Is anybody else hearing that?
Steven, Steven.
Anybody that's not speaking, please mute, mute yourself, please. Not speaking, please mute yourself.
It is an attendees, actually. Stephen U, his microphone is still on.
What?
One of the attendees, his microphone is still on. Stephen U.
Well, he need to mute himself, he can't hear us.
I don't know why, you know, all these mixed use places keep running to this issue.
The office should unmute him. He's an attendees. He's not a board member, right?
Now they're letting people go through their presentation.
Marie, can you fire him and mute him, please?
Let you this guy, whoever this lawyer is. Do his presentation.
Thank you. I'll continue in the meantime, and if it becomes too difficult to hear me, please stop me and we can pause.
Thank you.
So just going through the existing uses on the site very quickly, I'll start in the southeast corner and kind of move counterclockwise. So in the southeast corner is the existing Nurses Residence Building, which has been vacant for several decades. And to the west of that is a vacant lot fronting Massoth Avenue. And then west of that is St. Nick's Headquarters Building, which is again on the site that's being rezoned, but is not part of the redevelopment project. Then moving up to the northwest corner are the existing Neighborhood Women's Houses buildings, which again will not be changed as a part of this project. Then there's the Historic Power Plant Building, which DHS currently uses for storage and distribution of materials for their shelter facilities. And south of that is the Historic Main Hospital Building, which currently houses the Barbara Climan 200 bed homeless shelter. And in the northeast corner, across from Cooper Park Houses, are the other two Neighborhood Women's Houses buildings. And so this is our site plan showing our vision for redeveloping the site. And again, I'll start in the southeast corner and kind of move counterclockwise since that's the rough sequencing that the buildings would be redeveloped. But before I talk about the four buildings, I just want to emphasize that we really heard from the community that's a priority to reopen the site that currently kind of blocks off different parts of the neighborhood from one another, be it Cooper Park Houses from Cooper Park itself. Or the residences to the east of the site from Graham Avenue. So we've really gone to great lengths to open the site up. We're creating over an acre and a half of publicly accessible open space that will be landscaped for this community. And opening up Skilman Avenue through the heart of the site as kind of a primary artery and connector to weave back together the pieces of the site, of the neighborhood surrounding the site, providing easy access and porosity through the site. So Building One is the Historic Nurses Residence, which will be reused as a new 200 bed homeless shelter. Building Two is the new construction of a 311 unit multifamily affordable housing property with some retail and community facility space. Both of those buildings would be built as part of Phase One, which we're targeting construction start on for about a year from right now. Phase Two would be comprised of buildings three and four. So Building Three would reuse the existing historic main hospital building and convert that building into 107 units of affordable housing reserved for senior citizens. Building Four would be built on the site of the existing north wing of the main hospital building, which would be demolished along with the power plant building. And that building would have 138 units of multifamily affordable housing along with some community facility space. So this slide shows the proposed affordability mix for the affordable housing. 100% of these units onsite will be affordable housing, reserved for households earning 80% of area median income or below. So Buildings Two and Four, which are the new construction multifamily buildings, will be built under HPD's Ella Program. So 30% of the units will be set aside for formerly homeless households and the rest will be spread across AMIs from 30% AMI to 80% AMI. Building Three, which is the senior affordable building, will be built through HPD's SARAH Program. And again, 30% of the units will be set aside for formerly homeless seniors. And then the remaining 73 units will be available to seniors earning anywhere from 0% AMI to 50% AMI. And all of these units will have project based section eight vouchers, which means that any senior that is earning under 50% of AMI can apply. And the project based section eight vouchers will ensure that they pay no more than 30% of their income to rent, whether they earn 0% of AMI or 50% of AMI. And this slide illustrates some of the rents based on 2021 AMIs for these units. So for instance, a family of three earning 50% of AMI occupying a two bedroom unit would pay $1,157 per month. An individual renting a studio earning 60% of AMI would pay about 950 bucks a month. And a family of five earning 30% of AMI could occupy a three bedroom unit paying $704 per month in rent. So now if Jody from Project Renewal has been made a panelist, I'd love to hand it over to her to talk a little bit more about the shelter.
Great, thank you, Max. And hi, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank the community board for having us and thank our government partners on this project, HPD and DHS. And of course, it's an absolute pleasure to be doing this with both Hudson Companies and St. Nick's Alliance. And I'm really happy to be here. I'm just gonna take a quick two minutes to give an overview with respect to the shelter that we're planning, as Max mentioned, on the southeast corner of the campus at the location of the former Nurses Residence. And as everybody knows, there is currently a 200 bed shelter already on the campus. And as everybody knows, there is currently a 200-bed shelter already on the campus. So there will still be a 200-bed shelter on the campus. There are only two things that are changing materially. One is that instead of the city operating the shelter, Project Renewal, a comprehensive 50-plus-year-old human services organization, is going to be operating the shelter. And the other thing that we're able to do is to design, to purpose-build the shelter with, with the purpose in mind, with the intended use of operating shelter. So we've gone through a thoughtful design process with an architect that we've designed around the explicit goals of having a safe environment, having an environment that communicates respect to the clients that we serve, having an environment that's going to be able to accommodate all of our programming space in the floor plan, and also, most critically, designing with an eye towards really being a good neighbor. And, and what does that mean? So the shelter is going to be integrated into the broader campus. We'll have great landscaping. We'll have great lighting. We're also making a lot of explicit choices around ensuring that the building entrance faces away from Cooper Park and Debevois Avenue. Our goal is really to keep the foot traffic of our clients to the interior of the site and off the main avenues. And our front, our front entrance is designed as a front porch, which will create a place within the building for our clients to gather outside without being on a sidewalk. So we, we feel good about some of the efforts we have, we've undertaken from a design standpoint to have the shelter integrate well within the surrounding community. Just really quickly on the social services front, it will continue to be a 200-bed men's shelter. We will have a broad range of social services on site. The ultimate goal will be for us to work with the clients that are sent to us from the City Department of Homeless Services toward the ultimate highest goal of obtaining housing. But we will be doing any number of social services activities with our clients in the interim, trying to help bring them stability and get them ready for housing. So we will have case management. We will have housing specialists. We will have a robust workforce development program. We will have occupational therapists, and the list goes on. And we're really looking forward to getting to know each of you better and being a great neighbor. And with that, Max, I'm turning this back over to you.
Thanks so much, Jody. So now we'll discuss some of the other community facility and retail uses proposed as part of the project. So those are shown in light blue and pink here. As you can see, those uses are really contained in Building 2, which will front Masbeth, and Building 4, which will front Jackson Street. Building 2 is going to have three different community facility retail spaces. So on the southeast corner, there's going to be a space for a 5,000-square-foot walk-in clinic to serve the residents of this site, the neighborhood, and the surrounding community. We're in conversations with a number of the leading healthcare providers in New York City about operating that clinic, and we're really excited to bring that use as part of the project. Right next door, Saint Nick's is working in partnership with Evergreen to bring a 2,500-square-foot business development and workforce development center to the site. And then in the western corner, there's a 1,500-square-foot space for a small cafe amenity to provide drinks and snacks to residents, parkgoers, neighbors, and people using and visiting the site. And then in Building 4, we've incorporated a 5,000-square-foot senior center that provides an opportunity to relocate and expand the existing senior center located in Cooper Park Houses. We really heard during our community outreach, the need for more space for seniors and more robust services. So we're really excited to be able to provide that use as part of Building 4 and a really fantastic ground floor space there. So we've continued to advance the design of these buildings. And even in the last two months or so, since we last presented, the design has continued to get more fleshed out and it's so exciting to see it come together and really come to life. We really feel that this is going to be the best affordable housing in New York City in terms of the design, the sustainability features, and the array of amenities that are being included. So all of the buildings are being built with sustainability kind of front and center in the design process. The two adaptive reuse buildings will be certified as LEED Gold, and the new construction buildings will be built to Passive House standard. And the new construction buildings will also have solar arrays on the roof. But some of the amenities that these residential buildings will feature are listed here. Courtyards, rooftop terraces, children's playrooms, laundry, fitness centers, yoga rooms, playground equipment. We're really excited about the spaces that we're able to bring so that residents of this campus will not just have a great place to live, but also a great place to hang out, to work, to play, to meet with friends and family, and enjoy the, the community where they live. And our commitment to creating great affordable housing really extends beyond the buildings themselves to how we're envisioning this whole campus and how we're actually going to create this campus. So first and foremost in that effort is definitely job creation. And in Saint Nick's, we have such an incredible partner with so much experience in job skills training and job placement. And they will be leading the efforts with a focus on MWBE hiring and local hiring and creating employment opportunities here, not just during construction, but well into the future. You know, be that in property maintenance, retail, or providing work opportunities at the health clinic or at the workforce development center. And to help make these opportunities possible, Hudson Companies and Saint Nick's have entered into a really unique partnership where Hudson and our general contracting affiliate are going to be providing funding directly to Saint Nick's for their job skills training program to make sure that there's the funding available for local workers who want to be involved in this project and want to have hiring opportunities to get the skills that they need. So we're really excited to be able to ensure not just that there are going to be the opportunities on site, but community members here will have the opportunity to get the skills they need to be qualified for those jobs. I've mentioned our focus on creating more open space. We know how important creating more open space is for this community. As I mentioned, there's going to be about an acre and a half of publicly accessible open space throughout the site, which will not only provide spaces for residents to gather, but we believe will also just improve the safety and security of this community. And again, our focus on creating great open spaces extends beyond just the site. Saint Nick's and Hudson Company are committing funding to improve Cooper Park as well. We know that Cooper Park is really the heart of this part of the neighborhood, and we want to make sure that it continues to be an excellent community resource and a great neighborhood park. So we're providing some funding to make future improvements to Cooper Park as well as the open space improvements that we're making to this project. And last, I've mentioned sustainability a couple of times, and what an important theme it is and focus for this project. We have a really robust stormwater retention system. I think we've all seen in the last 10 days or so the damage that can be caused by extensive storms and flash flooding, and how important it is to be able to control stormwater runoff. So that's a big priority for this project. And we also know that air quality and rates of asthma in this community have been an issue. So these are going to be some of the lowest emitting new construction buildings, certainly among affordable housing, but really among all, all housing being built in New York City. So now just turning to some views to give everyone a sense of what this will look like upon construction completion. So this is a look westward down the newly pedestrianized Skilman Avenue, really the heart of the campus, which will only be open to very limited vehicular traffic and will really be a pedestrian thoroughfare. And this is showing the pedestrian connector from Masbeth, looking north into the heart of the site. And you have the view of the historic hospital building there. Zooming out a bit to give you a sense of kind of how the whole campus will feel upon construction. This is the view of hovering over Cooper Park. And a similar view hovering over Cooper Park Houses, looking southwest at the campus upon construction completion. So going back to the pedestrian scale, this is a view from Cooper Park, looking across Masbeth. In reality, there are a lot of tall trees in the park, so you wouldn't have this unobstructed view of the campus. But I wanted to show this view to give everyone a sense of the architecture, and we've really tried to be deferential to the historic architecture on the site. In Building 2 here, the new construction multifamily building, you can see that we've kind of carved out this lower massing that kind of mimics and pays homage to the architecture of the Nurses Residence with a similar scale, a similar roofline, a similarly consistent window layout, and a similar brick facade material. And you can see a similar strategy employed here. This is the view from Jackson Street of Building 4, where we've introduced the setback at the third story so that the lower portion of the Building 4 massing mimics the Neighborhood Women's Houses along Cooper, I'm sorry, along Jackson Street there. And this is showing another one of the open spaces. This is the recreational lawn in the northeast corner situated between Buildings 3, 4, and the Neighborhood Women's Houses. So with that, I thank everyone again for your time. We're really excited to be sharing the project again now that we've certified into ULR, and we'd love to open it up to any questions or comments from the attendees tonight.
Thank you, Max. Are there any questions?
There's a speaker on this item.
Okay.
Paul Kelteborn. Paul, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, this is Paul Kelteborn. I'm submitting some testimony on behalf of Friends of Cooper Park, a community organization focused on advocacy and stewardship of the park across the street from the proposed development. Cooper Park is very heavily, heavily used and a beloved neighborhood park. Alongside other organizations in the area and as part of GREC, Friends of Cooper Park has been requesting safety improvements to the streets in the neighborhood for many, many years. With the Montessori School on Olive Street, the Open Street on Sharon, the many children and families on Masbeth at Cooper Park Houses, and in our neighborhood generally, we deserve streets that deprioritize moving cars and instead support our safety and a healthy environment. With the redevelopment of the hospital and the addition of hundreds of new households to the neighborhood, we request that the community board demand a firm commitment from the DOT as part of any approval to address and remedy our longstanding traffic concerns. In particular, safety improvements and a traffic signal at the corner of Olive and Masbeth, safety improvements and a traffic signal at the corner of Kingsland and Masbeth, traffic calming on Kingsland and Masbeth, and a comprehensive redesign of the treacherous intersection where Woodpoint meets Concelia, Masbeth, and Bushwick Avenues. Safe streets are essential for the many families that visit Cooper Park in our growing residential community, and we urge the community board to see that these concerns are addressed as part of any large-scale rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there any more speakers signing up with this project?
No, but there were some questions that were in the chat.
Okay, I got some board members' hands raised. Dana?
Yeah, good evening. I just have a couple of questions just about the partnerships that are going on here and like who's doing what. So what does it look like as far as diversity goes on the leadership team that's actually developing all of this? Like there's talk about, oh, we're going to do a lot of hiring and preference to MWMBs and all this other. What's happening now as far as decision-making and plans go? Are we talking to folks who are directly impacted in developing some of these plans, like the people that are community members that will live in the shelter? And what does the leadership team look like in developing this and in decision-making? Not, oh, we have an advisory board and we do all of this, and then we go to them to check off to the box that we went and spoke to them, but rather are they sitting on the team in any of the partners? And then once the, the site is opened, where's the quality control going to be? Because, you know, as a lot of us deal with big nonprofits, Saint Nick's included, we see that there's a real issue with commitments following through. So what is, how are we going to measure all of that?
So so, so Dana, I'm not sure what commitments following through you're referring to, okay?
Like around, say that you're going to do, we're going to have these services. We're going to have occupational therapy. We're going to get people job right. How are we going to monitor? Is that Saint Nick's is overseeing that? You said?
Yeah, so, yeah, so to answer your question, Saint Nick's Alliance is a 50% co-developer of the entire development. The development of the shelter is the one exception where Saint Nick's and Hudson because, and with Project Renewal, and Project Renewal is really the operator and the lead for the shelter. However, Saint Nick's Alliance is going to be the controlling member of all the land for the other buildings and will be co-controlling the, the owner of the, of the shelter building, the nonprofit. All of them will be nonprofit owned and controlled. Saint Nick's Alliance, once the buildings are constructed, will be the managing agent responsible for the operation of the entire campus. We already are taking care of the Neighborhood Women's Houses and our own facility. In terms of, however, Hudson is very involved and they will be, you know, consulted and will be making co-decisions. The community groups of GREC, Greenpoint Renaissance Enterprise Corp., which include the Cooper Park Houses Resident Council, the Concerned Citizens of Whither Street, the Neighborhood Women, Williamsburg, Greenpoint, many community board members have been consulted and have given input and not, and have changed the design. In fact, the design has substantially followed the community plan that GREC laid out. Okay, when it comes to issues of diversity, I'm not exactly sure what you are referring to. Saint Nick's Alliance Board is construct, is comprised of virtually every board member is either a community resident or a business owner with a business operating in the community board. I believe there's only a couple of board members that are not. So we are tremendously accountable. For our 46 years, we have been tremendously responsive. And so in terms of what we're putting forward as a program, it's because we believe that that's what the community wants and what we can facilitate and create. Does that answer your question? I'm not sure, you know, if, if you were looking for something more specific than that.
It's fine. I, I'm, I'm less concerned about board members and more concerned about the people that we're supposed to be servicing and ensuring that they're, that they're being A, serviced correctly and getting exactly what's being promised, and then B, that they're also part of the decision-making.
Well, it, I, I, I hear you. I think that because the GREC members represent those kind of voices, that, that included in that is, is UNO, United Neighbors Organization, which is made up of low-income residents of this neighborhood, is a GREC member and definitely a very loud voice in this process. And, you know, the kind of work and the kind of services that Saint Nick's has done, particularly in the recent last 15 months, setting up a vaccination center at 211 Ainsley, providing food for Cooper Park Houses, facilitating that, along with, you know, others, Brooklyn Angels did that, doing, working with Williamsburg Houses, working with the residents and the seniors, shuttling people to Wood Hall for vaccinations, providing PPE. That, this is the biggest crisis of our lifetime, and we responded and did that for our residents. So we would, we would be doing the same kind of thing on an everyday basis as we've done for 45 years.
If I could just.
Thank you. Are there any other board members, questions? I don't see your hands up.
From a shelter perspective, really quickly.
Who's speaking?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Jody Rooted from her shelter would just like to say how the shelter works to answer the Diana's question.
I just really appreciated the question and I wanted to say briefly that from a project renewal standpoint, we have a very integrated and streamlined process of getting feedback from our clients on the services that we provide to them. It's, we use a variety of methods, including, but not limited to focus groups, surveys, community advisory boards, and we actually convened a panel of former clients to get their advice on some of the design features of this project. And we would love, in the community advisory board that we established for the shelter with the community, to do routine tours and site visits and to be held accountable around achieving key performance indicators. I think it's a great question and we'd love to explore that in further detail. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, I don't see any other board members' hands up.
I had a question.
Any other board members got a question?
Yes.
Yeah, I do, and so does Tommy.
Okay, everybody know the little three dots down there on the bottom is what a hand raised signal is?
Yeah, it's not there, Madam Chair. I clicked it and it wasn't. I keep getting some other information, but not the hand raised, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Tommy had a question first.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Madam Chair. To Max and Frank, thank you for this presentation. As, as someone who 40 years ago joined Julia Foster and my mother in these protests in 1982, it's, it's great to see 40 years later, the beauty that we're gonna have for our community, for our residents, in particular the seniors. My mother, 87, still lives in Cooper.
Wow, that's great.
As far as the, uh, the senior center, Frank, and our Cooper Park seniors, do we know already who's gonna be running the senior center? Which one of our, our not-for-profits? Are we gonna have a kitchen in there? Are we gonna have some fresh food for our seniors? Just, uh, you know, the current senior center is not, you know, not the best. Amanda, Amanda would know, Julia would know. But, uh, just to see what the, what the senior center is gonna, is gonna be like for our, for our community, Frank. Thank you.
Sure. So in fact, a lot of the impetus, thank you, Tommy, and good to see you and, and Ahmed both. A lot of the impetus to, to suggest having the senior center move across the street into the new building was actually in the conversations when Amanda was, was on, was, was the leading of the resident council before Amanda was leading the resident council and after. It's been a consistent issue because this current senior center is inadequate. That, as, as Max talked about, that building will be one of the last ones done. And so, um, the, who is gonna operate it is up to the city of New York. It'll, we, we expect or hope that the program that's currently at NYCHA at Cooper Park Houses would move and would be able to expand. And so the design of that center, I think, yes, a kitchen, more rooms. Right now, you basically have two rooms and kind of a big pool table. So it's, uh, it, it's tremendous. It's really a leftover space. So I think it's the kind of thing that we would look to get input and design from the Cooper Park residents and by being across a Jackson, it can be a, a little bit of a broader center. So it can, it can, it can be a, um, part of a network. You know, we have the swinging 60s, we have others, and so residents who maybe not live at Cooper Park can also be a part of it and, but yet it still will be a Cooper Park-focused kind of thing, you know. So I think what you're thinking in terms of needs is what we had in mind. And if it's, if it's currently JASSA is operating it, Saint Nix has, has indicated interest to, to look at, 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 at trying to expand and operate there, whoever would operate it would be part of the process. Is what I can say.
Thank you, Frank.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Oh, Julie, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure. Maybe I'm expanding on what Dana might have been trying to ask folks that were involved in the process of making decisions for this project. Not only were they just, was there also members of the outside of community groups saying, I'm just gonna give an example of my son, he's not involved in any community group, were people like him involved in the decision-making? I know when I was the president, it was basically all of us that were community groups. We belong to a group where other people.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, Julia, you muted one second.
You're, you're going in now, Julie. We can't hear you, Julie.
Let, let me try and answer, because I think I have your gist. I mean, you know, a, as you know, Saint Nix has been a part of numerous meetings. HPD had visioning with a lot of residents have been a part of it. There was a visioning session actually at Cooper Park Houses where residents from the neighborhood, not just Cooper Park Houses, came and attended in the community center, if you remember that, right? That was like 20, 2017, 20, 2016, we had those meetings in December 2016, January 2017. And so there's been a lot of input to kind of create this and, um, you know, there is opportunity in the next phases for refinement, but I don't think there's anything in here that's contrary. The, the needs that we heard with senior housing, the needs we heard was housing for low-income people, no market rate housing, the need to have some commercial or activity along Masbeth, the need to have some pedestrianization and park and open space. And to have a lot of housing, we heard too. And so there was really a balance. So, the great majority of people are some of the same that have shown a continual interest, but we've had opportunities for broader public input. In fact, we tried to have a virtual meeting. I will say the pandemic did crimp some of that in, in the last year to try and have a kind of a broader meeting. But I think this plan represents what I've heard over my 15 years working on this project and other members of the board have been working on it since the hospital closed. So, including what Tommy said, protesting its use as a shelter and such like that. So. There is one question. There, there's a question, if I may, Madam Chair, from Mr. Costa to the panelist. Will the management charge an extra fee like the bike room or gym? And Max, for the bike parking, there is no fee to, for the residents to park their bike. That's part of the design to make sure that we can be as mobile. I don't, I, I, I think, I'm not sure, uh, what we put in the underwriting, Max. Do you want to answer that?
Sure, yeah. Both the gym and the bike parking are available to residents at no fee.
And that, we looked at the idea of having washer and dryers, but the reality is that if we're trying to do energy efficiency, we're trying to do other things, it's much better to have one area where that can occur. So we are not able to provide 300 stacked washer and dryers throughout the building. We're gonna be having a laundry room in that building. There was also a question about the address of the shelter. The current shelter address is 300 Skilman. I don't think we have decided on what the address of the shelter would be. It will be something Skilman, probably. We have to ask the post office, actually, what they would do. But Jody, I'm not sure how that works, but, um, we haven't, we haven't decided on that specific address.
Yeah, we're engaged in the address verification process right now. So once we have, uh, address numbers assigned, we can share them with the community board.
And, and, and Julia, yes, we will try and, and find other ways to reach people who may not have email and, and post some meetings if we have future events and other things. Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, everybody, the hand raised sign is still to the right at the bottom of the panelist, of the participants list. They changed, they made this darker, so I didn't see it. Marie, you said there was somebody that wanted to ask a question?
I believe they did. I believe they did.
Okay.
I looked through the chat. I, I think that they all answered the questions or put their hands down.
Okay, are there any other questions?
There's a question from Kevin Costa about the, uh, solar panels.
Question is, um, what is the percentage of energy needs meet by the solar panels? I don't know, Max, if we figured that out yet.
So, so we're still in the preliminary stages of, um, designing the solar arrays, so we haven't sized what their production capacity is going to be yet. But we can definitely circle back with that information once we get a little bit more advanced in that design.
And the idea of battery technology, we're trying to investigate everything we can to try and make these buildings as energy efficient as possible, and all those suggestions are good to look at. Also, Manager, I just wanna point out, um, it's, I know a lot of people know, but, you know, there's a number of community board members, Tish Santiata, Jan Peterson, Eric Presides, uh, even Ju- Julia for, for much of the time, Foster and others that have been a part of the Greck and before even this project advocating for the site. And I think that's where the board has been. And I just wanna acknowledge them because a lot of their input has driven and kept us you know, honest in terms of how we're trying to do things here.
Thank you, Frank. Are there any other questions? No other questions. Thank you so much, Frank, for the presentation. Best.
I tried to make a statement, but I can't, don't find the little hand, De'Allis.
It's to your right at the bottom.
Okay, well.
Go ahead.
Anyway, just quickly, and I, I appreciate Francois's about the comments about, I, I would like to highlight that we've had extremely diverse people involved all the time, but women have played a very strong role in this whole development. And I think you, people would expect that I would say something, but neighborhood women, Marie, Tish, all these women, Diane Jackson, if you look at the side of the building, the neighborhood women houses, it has all these women that for 35, 40 years were there and volunteered and played significant roles. We plan to work on the legacy of the building. We are to tell the story because the story is an incredible story. And, um, I think, and to make it tied with the history of our community and what it takes to really do something like this, I think is just important. I won't go on about that, but I do want to highlight the women and the leadership that came out of Neighborhood Women in training and providing women to ask, and these questions about who later, who will have the jobs? Who will, how will the programs work? What power will people have? Are really important questions in today's world because a lot of times people get things and they end up just being clients. And I hope that the homeless that are going in will have this input. I'm, I'm being reassured, but it will be, it's be unusual because a lot of homeless shelters, people have nothing to say. So this is why we took this group because they offered the most in terms of, of really empowering the people that are there. So I think that the story will continue as we go along and we should monitor. And I think it's, it's really important, what Frank said, is that we look at how close do we get to our values and views that we had when we started 45 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Are there any other questions? No other questions in the chat? Okay, thank you so.
De'Allis, when, uh, please have the presenters log off so I can, I think I'm having trouble with the controls because they're still on.
Okay, thank you so, thank you so much. Have a great summer and like Marie said, we're having technical difficulty, so we would appreciate if you log off. Thank you.
Can we get an answer to the question about when, when the application will be certified?
They're gone.
Actually, this is Max with Hudson. I'm still on. So, uh, the application was, was, uh, certified by the City Planning Commission on June 21st, so it's already been certified.
So when does that mean that the Land Use Committee needs to meet about it and when does it need to be voted on? Where is it in the clock in terms of?
Well, so we're approximately 20 days into our clock and I think, uh, I don't know if Frank is still on, but I know he's been in touch with the community board and, uh, you know, I think we'll defer to the community board as to when you're available for those meetings and we'll, of course, make ourselves available to meet with the Land Use Committee or any other, uh, subcommittees that like a presentation.
Trina, we'll be, we'll be, um, they'll, we'll be presenting at our next, our September board meeting.
September, okay, that was my question.
Okay, thank you, Max. Like I said, board members, there's a hand in the left-hand corner. You want to speak, please raise your hand so we can keep some continuity and don't be here to 12 o'clock tonight. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sonia, it's not working. We tried it, the option for the hands. When you go under, it isn't working. I know a lot of people were complaining about it. It's true, it's not working. I tried myself.
Well, Dana had a hand up, Eric had a hand up.
Well, some of them, mine is not working. I think in a few, Jan, a few people mentioned it. So it's, okay, just to let you know.
Okay. I guess we having technical difficulties. Okay, we're gonna go back to what, 97 Quay Street, Mr. LaBelle?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I'm joined today by, good evening. Um, I'm joined today by, uh, Afraim Perez, uh, as well as Kevin Williams. Afraim is a project architect and Kevin is the environmental consultant. I'm not sure whether or not someone can, um, unmute them. Afraim is listed as an attendee with his hand up, and I think Kevin is listed as an attendee as well. Um, but while that happens, I'm happy to run through the presentation, if I may share my screen. Uh, and then we can, um, answer any specific questions. I'm hoping that Afraim can run through the architecture. Not sure if someone is, um, gonna allow me to share.
De'Allis? De'Allis? The clock on, on that item is, uh, from June 21st to September 28th.
Is someone working on allowing me to share?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the controls.
No problem.
Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't know why this is not. None of this mouse is working.
Can people talk and start?
Uh, I'm attempting to do so, but I need to share my screen to show the presentation and right now it's grayed out.
Our control by technology.
I'm sorry, I'm still locked out of the controls.
Well, I'm a little hamstrung, but I'm happy to discuss the rezoning and to at least start and see whether or not the technology catches up to us.
That'd be great.
Okay, good. Good evening, anyone, everyone. Richard LaBelle from Sheldon LaBelle. It's good to see the Community Board this evening. Again, I'm joined by Afraim Perez, the project architect, as well as Kevin Williams from Equity Environmental, who's the environmental consultant. The rezoning today is for Seventy-Nine Quay Street. And this rezoning is what would be considered a minor rezoning in that currently the property is Zone M-one-two R-six-A. It was so designated in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning in two thousand and five, which would permit a mixed-use building, the ground floor commercial and a total of eight stories at eighty-five feet. The proposal right now is to rezone that property from M-one-two R-six-A to M-one-four R-seven-D. What this would permit would be a building which would be nine stories and ninety-five feet. Because the site is of significant depth at one hundred and sixty-five feet, the project architect is able to mask the building such as to allow only one additional story. Despite this, it's really an impactful rezoning for purposes of generating residential units and more importantly, for purposes of generating affordable units. As we've demonstrated to certain stakeholders, when we started this process, the R-six-A produces a seventy-nine unit building with sixteen affordable units, of which seven are studios and nine are one and two bedrooms. The R-seven-D that's proposed, despite it being only one story additional, allows for a total of twenty-five units, of which seven are studios, but fifteen are one and two bedrooms. And the third group is three bedrooms, of which three affordable units are generated. So we're really thrilled with the rezoning because of the generation of these affordable units and also affordable units of, of various sizes. I see that I'm now allowed to share my screen. I'm going to now call up the project. Hopefully this works. Oh, there we go. Thank you. It says I'm sharing a whiteboard, which I don't want to do. Close that. Okay. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So this is the proposed rendering for the building at the site on the corner of Quay and West Streets. I'm going to page down. And so the zoning district can be seen on the right side. This is the, as we talked about, and it spans two maps. This is an M-one-two R-six-A was so rezoned in two thousand and five. Here is the proposed rezoning area. You could see the bulk of this is occupied by one site. It is a sixteen thousand five hundred square foot site on the corner of West and Quay Streets. It is currently populated by a mixed-use building of roughly one to three stories with three commercial uses and two residential units. The building would, as proposed, would be able to be redeveloped with a nine-story building with eighty-six units. You can see from the land use map that the land use in the area generally supports a rezoning of this context. And what do we see from the land use maps? Importantly, you have an R-six-B district to the east. You have this intervening R-six-A district within the middle. And then, of course, along the waterfront, the R-six and R-eight districts. These are non-contextual districts, meaning that there is no absolute height cap on these. So as you would expect, taller buildings of right now between fourteen and roughly thirty-three stories are proposed. So the proposed nine-story building at the premises, which again is only one story greater than what is currently permitted, would generate a transitional area between the five-story buildings and six-story buildings permitted by the R-six-B through the fourteen and thirty-three to forty-story buildings permitted under the R-six and R-eight. You could see the proposed zoning change mapped here. Again, this is a very minor rezoning. It allows for productive commercial use on the ground floor of this property. Roughly thirteen thousand square feet of new commercial retail use would be generated, providing a nice commercial activity on this corridor as well as an entryway to the waterfront. You can see from the photos generally the surrounding area as well as the building. I won't belabor this. I'll just page through. These are some of the shots of the existing building, which is a longstanding building, which was built in the nineteen thirties. And finally, we have a rendering of the proposed building. If, I would ask if whether or not Afraim is on the call and whether or not he's able to speak right now. If so, I would have him quickly page through the plans. If not, we can just go through it quickly. Afraim, are you able to talk? So I know he's on the attendee list if he can be unmuted. And if not, I'm going to page through the remainder of the plans. I'm assuming that he's, I know there's been some technical issues tonight. I'm assuming he can't be unmuted. Okay, I'm going to proceed, Afraim. If you can hear me and you're able to talk, feel free to do so. Oh, he's on, but he's still muted. I just got the text. So while someone unmutes Afraim, I'm just going to, to scroll through this. This is a page with zoning calculations. It is, again, would be a roughly ninety-two thousand square foot building with eighty-six residential units. Again, the ability to generate larger units, including more two and three bedrooms, is seen as a big plus to the rezoning. One that was discussed with Councilmember Steve Levin at the beginning of the process. There was about an eight-to-ten month period where we didn't even do any filings. But the idea was that we worked with the council member and the generation of larger affordable units and more affordable units was seen as a, as a fair trade-off, given the limited reduction in height that would occur through the proposal. These are, you know, rough elevations of the site showing the massing of the building. It's a very attractive massing with terraced floors from the sixth floor to the top. We have a parking level which is able to generate thirty parking spaces. Additionally, forty-two bike parking spaces are permitted within the cellar level. The ground floor generates high-quality retail commercial space of roughly thirteen thousand square feet. And then there are studios, one, two, and three bedrooms, which appear through the second through sixth floor in a standard floor plan. The seventh floor is setback and then a setback eighth and ninth story, with the ninth story being an extremely setback story. Again, this is a rendering of the building. It's a, you know, a very attractive rendering from the, from the perspective of city planning. It's something that we worked on for a while. And with that, and with the massing as is seen here, as well as the stacking plan, we're happy to answer any questions. Finally, I would just add that we share this, which is a rendering, demonstrating the taller buildings to the west of the site and as a transitional matter, the lower buildings to the east of the site, which is one of the reasons we find this to be a meritorious application. And with that, the applicant team is happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
I raised my hand. It's in the little thing.
Okay, Tom, I see it. Go ahead. Thank you.
I live next to a building that's allegedly four stories tall and has this monstrosity on the roof called mechanicals, like a hideous air conditioner and a number of other things. What, how much is going on top of those nine stories? How high are you going up with mechanicals and elevator CAD and, you know, and are you going to cover those lovely air conditioners? They're just going to be bare aluminum, you know, sheeting, hideous monsters on the top?
Sure. Thanks for the question, Tom. I'm just going to show a copy of this elevation. And hopefully now Afraim, who's much more qualified to discuss mechanicals and coverings, is able to talk right now. Afraim, are you able to talk? Still muted? No, he's still unable to talk. Um, okay, to the, to the extent that he is able to be unmuted, that's great. If not, Tom, we're happy to answer in writing the exact treatment of the mechanicals on the roof.
Yeah, because we got a lot of buildings that are, you know, sorted to code and height, and then they put this crap on the roof, which is just, you know, where did it come from?
You know, Afraim is listed as number one on the attendee list. On my list, it's Afraim E-F-R-A-I-N as in Nancy Perez, P-E-R-E-Z. I don't know whether or not Marie has controls and is able to unmute him. Makes me want to go back to the swinging sixties and see everyone in person.
We do want to go back.
Um, again, I'm sorry.
All right. Well, I've asked my questions.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, is there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Marie, were you able to unmute Perez? I guess not. Okay.
Okay.
Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. LaBelle?
It does, Dee. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thanks to you as well.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Open Restaurant Sidewalk Cafe. Is anybody here present on that item?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm here. I'm Alexandra Pati Diaz, former designer and city planner and community liaison for Community District One from the Department of City Planning.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to present today our project. I kindly ask if Kate Richards can share her screen. And with me today.
Is it possible to get screen sharing access? I'm sorry.
Well, that is getting in the works.
Can you take down your presentation? Mr. LaBelle? He left, he went, he left?
He's still listed as being present.
Yeah, we still, we need to take, we take down his presentation.
Mr. LaBelle?
Okay, it's gone.
Great. And if we can give Catherine Richards capabilities to share her screen, that would be great. In the meantime, Madam Chair, I can, I can share that I'm here today, joined by colleagues of the Department of City Planning, but as well from the Department of Transportation to present to you the, the first zoning tax amendment that will facilitate to make open restaurants a permanent program in the city. So our presentation will first have kind of like an overview by DOT about the open restaurant program and what they have learned about, about during the last year and a half and their plan to make them permanent. And which the first step is to approve the proposed zoning tax amendment. And then we will explain the proposal, what things we are recommending and to modify from the zoning resolution to start with more in the obstacles to make the open restaurants a permanent program for the city. Catherine, you cannot share the screen, right? I also can't share the screen.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Can, can, before they start their presentation, could they tell us who is lobbying for this permanent open restaurant? It certainly is not coming from the Community Board, since I know of meetings all over the city about this. So who's pushing for this permanent open street restaurant? And when the mayor changes, how's that going to infect things? Because I know there's a meeting in Board Two next week. There's a neighborhood meeting on Thursday about this because these street restaurants are out of control.
I think that, I think they made some legislation. I think the city council is coming, came up with some legislation for this.
Okay. I believe like the first part of the presentation will be done by my colleague from the Department of Transportation. Dash, are you here? Can you talk?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
One second. Let me just make sure of the screen up. Okay, cool. And everyone can see the presentation, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Nice to join you tonight. My name is Dash Henley. I'm a planner at Department of Transportation in the Brooklyn Borough Commissioner's Office. So this presentation, like Alex Yerander was saying, is going to be on our permanent open restaurants program, which will give restaurants the options of sidewalk and roadway seating for outdoor dining. The program will look to balance the many needs of streets and sidewalks and keeping restaurants and other users in mind. Finally, the program will take what has worked and not worked in the past, both pre-COVID and during the emergency that we've been in since last March, when developing these future guidelines. But I just want to make it clear that at least our portion of the presentation tonight, while we will be talking about both sidewalk and roadway dining, what DOT and DCP are asking the board for tonight is your opinion on the specific sidewalk cafe text amendment. That's going to be covered in more detail by DCP. Next slide, please. Okay, cool. So as everyone here is probably already aware, the city had street cafes long before COVID, but we did have far fewer of them. The majority of the program was administered by what was then known as the Department of Consumer Affairs and what's today known as the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. DOT did run one small pilot of the public roadway seating, which we called street seats. And sorry, I think if we can go one more slide forward, actually. Yeah, there we go. So like I was saying, we did run one small pilot program called Street Seats that won on the right-hand side. But it was very limited in scope. There were only about twenty-five setups and most of them were in Manhattan. And our understanding from that program is actually that the relatively low participation was in large part due to the cost and application process. Next, please. So taking that in mind, and also as a result, obviously of COVID, we created the open restaurants program. So New York City suspended the existing rules through an emergency executive order. And DOT created a fast and simple way for restaurants to conduct their business in the public right of way. And since the launch, which was about a year ago over the summer, over eleven thousand restaurants have participated, which estimates show has saved about a hundred thousand jobs that would have otherwise been lost. And by many accounts, this program has been a lifesaver, not just for those jobs in the restaurant industry, but also we've seen in the city that it's been, that outdoor dining has been an incredible vitality, shown the incredible vitality of the city sidewalks and streets and has really been for many beacon of hope and innovation and otherwise, you know, dark time with the past year and a half. And a sign that the city can do so much more with these spaces in the future. Next, please. So with that in mind, we have learned in the past year that there, it hasn't, we've had successes and challenges. So we've learned both of those positive and negative lessons in that time. And all of those lessons are critical to informing how we proceed with the permanent program. So on the positive side, we think the robust use of the emergency program was helped by three things. First, unlike the pre-emergency sidewalk program, no geographies were off limits here. So any restaurant with the ground floor frontage and sidewalk or roadway space that met the siting criteria could participate in the program. Second, the program was free and it was easy to access, unlike the pre-COVID sidewalk program, which required months of reviews by multiple agencies. And third, the element of roadway dining gave restaurants brand-new options. And third, the element of roadway dining gave restaurants brand-new options that they didn't have to, particularly those that might not have had enough space on the sidewalk itself to accommodate a cafe. We also had know that there were some challenges and that we learned some lessons from those as well. First, the speed of the rollout. In fact, the, the program was built from scratch under the emergency circumstances of the pandemic created some confusion. And as our agency learned more about doing a program like this, some of the guidance had to change over time. Second, throughout the program, DOT learned more about the challenges specific to roadway seating and its interaction with the roadway. So we've heard from agencies such as Fire Department that there could be issues with turning radius and safety signs. So we want to take into account all those feedback, all that feedback from the different agency partners in order to make it a better program, especially with safety in mind. And third, we know that enforcement has been complicated on both sides. You know, on the one hand, you have restaurants who are already dealing with a lot in the middle of the pandemic and they feel squeezed by rules and over-inspected. But on the other hand, we know that some communities, and particularly those with mobility issues, have been concerned about underenforcement with the rules. So going forward, that's something that we want to address. Next slide, please. All of that being said, we know that the program has been a massive success and the mayor charged us with developing a permanent successor to the emergency program. And that requires changing a number of different laws that control outdoor dining in non-emergency situations as we move, you know, past the pandemic. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're proposing for the permanent program and then I'm going to return to the topic of the legal changes needed to make that happen. Next, please. Okay, so to start with some overall guidelines, we estimate that as in the emergency, DOT will administer a permanent option for both sidewalk seating and roadway dining with similar rules to current sidewalk cafes, but the program would be available citywide. And then let's go to the next slide, please. So when we have final specific design guidelines, those will be very clear and it will revolve around principles that balance the use of sidewalk space by the restaurant and cafes, but maximizes the experience and openness and activation to the general public. Notably, the, the size and scale will be defined by the size of the street furniture, the size of the sidewalk and the street furniture on it. And I'll talk a little bit about that next. Next slide, please. So most, for most of the city, the old eight-foot rule would apply, meaning that there needs to be eight-foot clearance between the end of the sidewalk seating and the curb itself. And for the most part, that will be true in the new program, but we're also exploring other options in special cases. So in particular, particularly in areas that have a lot of pedestrian traffic. And we're also looking at waivers for locations that cannot meet that requirement. Next, please. So switching gears a little bit, we think that the introduction of the, the roadway option has been a tremendous new opportunity for restaurants, especially those that may have narrow sidewalks and not be able to fit sidewalk cafes because of those clearance issues. So while we're still working on what the rules would be permanently, we will have setups in parking lanes except prohibited zones, but we will also ensure that we maintain public safety, have clear guidance and enforcement on sound and comply with ADA requirements. Next, please. So one other change to the program with, that would be that we're proposing to make the program seasonal. So the program would not operate during the winter. But that being said, all restaurants currently in the program, which is still not the permanent one, will be able to keep operating uninterrupted through the 2022 winter season. So despite us, you know, proposing what I'm saying here, it would not take into, it would not be taken into effect this next winter. And we're also looking at a hardship waiver for those locations that would have difficulty removing their setups once winter comes around. Next, please. So in looking at both moving the legal authority to run the program to DOT and in creating the new processes for roadway setups, we're looking to streamline the review process as much as possible, while leaving in place the essential roles of agency and public review. Next, please. And in order to make that permanent program a reality, we need to follow these three steps that you can see on the slide. First, which is the focus for today, is the removal of locational prohibitions through zoning. So it's really key to unlocking the full citywide universe of applicability here and consolidating control and accountability for the program under a single agency, which would be DOT. And we're also working with the city council to enact appropriate legislation that would update the laws governing sidewalk cafes and then create a new set of laws and rules to govern roadway cafes. Next, please. Okay, so just in terms of timeline, this helps lay it out a little bit better. Following zoning and legal changes, we anticipate rulemaking that formalizes many, much of the program design and application details and then formal opening up of the application window for a new program, which still will not have gotten into effect, like I was saying before. So restaurants and communities should feel some certainty that though we're beginning the process of developing the future program now, the current emergency program is expected to be in effect as is for the next year and a half at least. So the expectation is that the restaurants will have ample time to transition into a new process if they choose without disruption. So changing zoning really is the first critical step to making this program permanent. But as you can see on the timeline, there are multiple steps to developing the full program and each of those steps welcomes public input and review. And next slide, please. So in conclusion, we're really excited to be able to make this program permanent. We know that the COVID pandemic has really shaped the way New Yorkers think about how our streets can be used, which has been a silver lining to the past year and a half. And we welcome feedback and encourage all to visit our website, which is listed there, to submit that feedback to us and help us develop all of the elements of this program, as well as the feedback from tonight, of course. And once again, the roadway portion of this presentation is very much preliminary and our primary purpose in presenting to the board tonight is to gather feedback on what Alexandra and others will talk about next, on the proposed text amendment change related to sidewalk cafes. And with that in mind, I'll turn it back to Alexandra.
Great, good. Next. Next. And perfect. Thank you. So previously discussed, there are three main legal processes to create a permanent open restaurant program. The first, which is the focus of the rest of this presentation, is the removal of locational prohibitions by a tax amendment. Sorry, I'm hearing echo. Are you hearing me well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that confirmation. Unnecessary zoning restrictions stand in the way of thousands of restaurants for participating in the outdoor dining and past the emergency. So this zoning proposal is key to unlocking the full citywide universe of applicability and consolidating the control and accountability for the program under a single agency, which will be the Department of Transportation. Next. So the proposed text amendment will remove the entirety of Chapter One, Article Four of our zoning resolution and related texts in all the special districts and other areas that relate to the sidewalk cafes to fully remove from the zoning any dictation of locations of the cafes. So this will allow for any restaurant to apply to a DOT for a sidewalk cafe if they can meet the required clear path and siding criteria, as explained before. Next. Just to recap how this landed in our zoning resolution, sidewalk cafes have long been part of New York City history and streetscape, but the last governing, these cafes have evolved over the years. When U-Lerp came into existence in the 1970s, cafe approvals were subject to full U-Lerp review as part of its revocable consent to use a street space. Almost immediately, it was recognized that this level of review was onerous and time-consuming and difficult to manage for each individual restaurant. So in the 1980s, the commission, the City Planning Commission, put into place a framework attempting to streamline the process by naming areas of the city where sidewalk cafes were allowed. Since then, the program has been amended dozens of times to make more and more fine grade distinctions on where and what kind of cafes are allowed in different areas. Up until COVID-19, zoning worked as the gatekeeper of whether sidewalk cafes could exist or not in our neighborhoods. Next. So under the zoning resolution rules, which are currently suspended as part of the emergency, zoning dictates three different kinds of cafes and where in the city it can be located. Most commonly enclosed cafes, which allows for readily removable tables, chairs and fencing with no allow overhead coverage other than the umbrellas or retractable roof. A small sidewalk cafe is an unenclosed sidewalk cafe containing no more than a single row of tables and chairs adjacent to the street line. It can extend farther to four and a half feet from the building. And then we have an enclosed cafe, which is fine as extensions of the building into the sidewalk using light building materials. Next. Zoning held the geographic restriction of where these cafes and which type of cafes were allowed. The public could view where cafes were allowed on DCP zoning and land use map, the ZOLA application. And we can see here in yellow allows only small cafe types. Purple are the areas where only unenclosed cafes are allowed and green is where all cafe types were allowed. Importantly, you can see that a lot of areas where cafes weren't allowed at all, even if the sidewalk were wide and the conditions otherwise will be allowing it. So red is areas specifically where cafes are prohibited and blue are the residential areas of the city. Next. So in order to provide the needed support for the restaurant, restaurant industry and they need to move dining, dining outdoor, New York City stood up an open restaurant program during the emergency for the use of the sidewalks and roadways by the restaurants. This was achieved by suspended zoning and rules through executive orders that allow restaurants to conduct outdoor dining in the public right of way. All zoning regulations and legislation called rules related to the sidewalk cafe program were suspended and the emergency self-certified program was set up by DOT, centralizing. The street sweeping rules were scaled back and restaurants were allowed to set up in the curving to provide additional seating. The restaurants could go to a website that DOT created to apply for a sidewalk cafe, a roadway cafe or both. So to date, next, over 11,500 restaurants are participating in the open restaurant program. In particular, the city saw a huge surge of outdoor dining occur on the outer boroughs. Around 10,000 of the restaurants used the sidewalk for the outdoor dining setup, which made an important impact on the industry preserving the jobs and providing the services to the residents of the city. So next, during the, during the emergency program, 2,500 restaurants were permitted in areas that would have been prohibited or limited under the existing zoning, but the proposed text amendment will allow them. Looking at the map on the right, in red, there are the restaurants in specific areas where they're prohibited by zoning. These include commercial meat blocks, certain special districts, under elevated rail lines and other name congested areas. In blue are all the, all the grandfather restaurants in residential areas. And in yellow are the limited by the small cafe destination. So zoning doesn't allow restaurants in, as you know, in residential areas, but many of these use predated zoning and so they have remained. We estimate that around 3,000 citywide and from those 3,000, approximately 1,000 of them are participating in the program. Next. So I moved too much on my script. Here are some examples of what we have seen around the borough. This is an example in Dumbo, it's a special district that specifically does not allow sidewalk cafes, but we have seen some great examples of how restaurants are doing outdoor dining during the emergency. This proposal will allow restaurants to apply as long they can meet the sitting criteria I said before. Next, we can see in this next photo, this is an example of an area where zoning doesn't allow restaurants, but this is a grandfather restaurant. In many cases, they have also taken advantage of the program. However, this proposal will not allow new restaurants from occurring in this area to get advantage of the program. Next. So as we have discussed in other text amendments that we have explained during this spring/summer session, you know that as part of the modifications that we do in our zoning resolution, we also take the opportunity to do some cleanups. So the cleanups that we're also doing as part of the text amendment include the removing definitions and cross-reference to the cafes, removing text that precludes operable windows that service outdoor restaurants, ensuring that no inclusion provisions require a restaurant to be fully endorsed, a second condition of its zoning district, and clarifying the sidewalk text to ensure it does not conflict with the operation of the open restaurant program. Next. So zooming in, in our community district, Community District One has zoning rules that allow for all cafes in much of the district, the exception being on the line, the elevated line of the J and Z subway trains and many of the residential meat blocks that are located between the commercial corridors. Next. So sidewalk, as I said before, sidewalk cafe program has existed prior to COVID and it licensed approximately 85 cafes in Community District One, of which 82 were regular unenclosed cafes, two small cafes and the enclosed cafe at Fortunato Brothers Pastry Shop. The photo that we see here is Sage Thai Restaurant in Braham from 2018. Next. So in comparison, now on the, under the emergency program, there have been 478 cafes in Community District One. 68 of them will have, have been prohibited under the current zoning. So you can, so you can see those again in the map as they're red and they're blue dots. And as we saw in the previous regulation, most of this prohibited sidewalk cafes are in meat restaurants in Williamsburg and Greenpoint, which are known for. So the zoning proposal to do all the tax changes will allow them to apply for a sidewalk cafe as long they meet a sitting will allow them to apply for a sidewalk cafe as long they meet the seating criteria and the clear path requirements that will in the future exist within the DOT rules. Next. So to summarize all, we are at the start of a multi-prolong legislative process. The text that is being referred out, that was referred out and is for your consideration today, was referred to all the community boards and the five borough presidents for 90 days. And we expect the text to come back to City Planning Commission during the fall. We anticipate that the city council actions to be underway during the same period, continuing the process of updating the city wall cafes and fully fleshing out the roadway cafe authority throughout the rulemaking process. Also underway during the summer and informed in part by the city consultations we imagine will be designing review process. We do not expect the full program launch until late 2022 or early 2023 at the earliest, which gives us a lot of time for restaurants to transition to a permanent program as they choose to do so. So as the other citywide text amendments that we have presented to you during the spring and the summer, this is in front of you, Sarah Farrell, where, you know, we are looking to get from you at communication leader if it is of the board and including recommendations for the city planning commission to consider at the moment of sending their project to be adopted by city council. Now, we can stop sharing the screen because this concluded our presentation and we can have a conversation by the text amendment, we can answer questions here with colleagues from the Department of City Planning and the Department of Transportation. And if there are questions that we cannot answer today or if they need other type of analysis, we're available to come back during the summer or during September as you wish.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom? I'm muted, so.
Sorry, sorry. This is a huge change and I don't know how, maybe the committees are going to have to meet with you. You know, I would start off with who's measuring the success of this emergency program? The Restaurant Owners Association or is the city really done a study of how successful this supposed program has been in creating jobs? You talked about the restaurants concerns, where did the residents' concerns come into this process at all? The people who live the second floor above on all of these places? You talked about waivers, who's going to determine the waivers? Somebody at DOT or is the community going to determine those waivers? You said everything that's out there now is going to stay, it's going to be grandfathered. A lot of these places are unsafe. We had one blow away on Manhattan Avenue the other day and land on cars in the middle of the street. Is that going to be grandfathered? You know, an unsafe place that blows down the street? I've seen places use storefronts on either side of their property. How is that going to get grandfathered? The ADA compliance, there's restaurants that are not ADA compliant now, they're blocking sidewalks, they're blocking ramps, they're blocking entire corners and nobody in a wheelchair could ever get down that street. Who's going to do the enforcement? Are they going to add people at DOT specifically to go out and inspect these sites and enforce it? You said there were 85 sidewalk cafes in our neighborhood and now there's like over 400. And all those additional cafes opened on our sidewalks with absolutely no community input, they just opened on the street. And then you keep using the word dining. The biggest problem is that bars are putting bars out on the street. They're putting flat screen TVs out in the street, they're putting speakers and music out in the street. Is that all going to be grandfathered? And that's not dining, standing in the street watching the Euro Cup on, you know, drinking a beer with no chair or tables, how is that dining? Under the sidewalk cafe rules, we required food service, we required waitresses, I mean servers. We required limits on where people could smoke. We had no music, no sound outside. If we do sidewalk and roadway eating, who's going to maintain that corridor between the sidewalk and the roadway? I mean, I've seen places where it's gotten down to like one person because the table on the sidewalk is pushed back and the people in the roadway are pushed back and you're down to like the width of one human being. It's, and the city's not getting a cent from this anymore. We used to charge fees for sidewalk cafes. Landlords are going to start raising rents by telling people coming in that, look, I got this road space, so I'm going to charge you more to rent my store so you can have this roadway space. And the city's not getting a dime for it. There's so many things that are, that need to be addressed on this. Then it's like, what's it, the restaurant association, is that all they were hearing from? So I don't know how you want to deal with this, Eric and I are going to write a long letter, the board's going to take a position, I don't know. But these are a lot of the things that I'm concerned about. And I know there's a meeting on Thursday in Manhattan about this, community board two Manhattan's talking about it next Tuesday. People are not happy and fire trucks, police cars, ambulances cannot fit down the streets. It's out of control.
I'll start. I'm Julie Shipper. I'm from DOT, one of Dash's colleagues. Thanks for having us here tonight.
Julie, you allow me to clarify some process thing and then you can go ahead with the program? Is that okay?
I think we should ask our question first.
In terms of process, you asked which committees should we see, should see this presentation again? It's recommended for both land use and transportation to see the presentation again and have, you know, a follow-up conversation. And in terms of grandfather, we.
Safety as well. I would check safety as well.
And women and outreach, we care about quality of life. We are not left out of this.
Community.
We can, we are happy to coordinate with the board and organize and organize ourselves to be present in those meetings. And in terms of the grandfather term, we use it for the restaurants or grandfather use within existing residential districts that right now the zoning wouldn't allow a new one there. We are not using grandfather for the things that you were mentioning, just to clarify that. Julie, my apologies for interrupting you, just wanted to take that out of the table. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm sorry, we have more questions for this presenter. Can you wait?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, personally, I. After, after, my end doesn't work, so I'm going to speak when, I just want to let you know.
Okay, Steve Chasler.
Yeah, I just kind of want to echo much of what Tom said. I mean, in terms of the challenges, I'm kind of shocked that you haven't gotten blowback about the volume of these open restaurants in terms of just the noise. I hear nonstop from people who live on Franklin Street or near Franklin Street just dealing with the, just a multiplier of volume of diners and mainly drinkers and residents and just hearing, you know, that their, you know, building owners can't rent their ground floor apartments because it's just so out of control. So I just feel like it's, something's really missing from the study or the assessment of what's going on here because, yeah, I just, it just seems like it is out of control. I look down the street and I just see a bunch of shacks. I mean, occasionally see one that's really well designed, but it just looks, it just looks like a big mess. And, and yeah, I think, Tom, you, I just, you really succinctly and erudite laid out so many details that have loose ends. Thank you.
Katie? Katie Denon?
Yes, thank you. I was, I was just curious in a similar vein. I mean, there were challenges that were mentioned in the presentation. So my question is, has anything been done to date to try to mitigate those challenges? You know, if there were enforcement issues, have you, have you changed how you're enforcing them? Or if there were accessibility issues, are you looking at them? Or is that something that you're sort of collecting now to implement in the future? What's the timing for that?
Who's that? I'm waiting for somebody to answer her, to answer for her.
Well, okay, I didn't realize that I was able to speak. I thought you were waiting for everyone to ask their questions. Um, I, so in terms of the challenge that we've seen, you're right, there have been some obvious challenges dealing with enforcement, ADA issues, and a lot of that is because this program was stood up so quickly trying to just help the restaurants getting everything during COVID. And we have done a lot since, so we have put out better guidance for the restaurants to revamp their structures. We have an enforcement team now that's going out and we are ramping up that enforcement team for the permanent program. So there'll be other inspectors and a full team of inspectors that are going to be hired. ADA issues are something that, you know, we were taking very seriously and part of this program, you know, we want this to be accessible to everyone and that has not been possible during the emergency program, but during the permanent program, again, with the enforcement team being stepped up, that is something that we're looking at and they will be enforcing very seriously for. So I think, you know, we are taking those challenges into account now, especially while we're planning for the permanent program and continue to take them into account and would love your feedback for more things that you've seen. And on our last slide that Dash had presented, we do on our DOT website have a portal for you to give us feedback, which we are, you know, taking into account as we plan for the permanent program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Peterson?
Two points is that, one is I don't understand the speed. I go along with Tom on that. We just elected, we're electing people right now, a new mayor. Why would people be pushing through and taking away the people that are coming in their responsibility on doing a major overhaul as this one? It looks like dirty political pool from what I can see, that's one. And the other thing is that people are, we're looking at what this board has raised the issue of gentification for the last 10, 15 years about how it's eroded the quality of life. For so long, people have testified, hundreds of them at this board. This is just one more thing and it would seem to me that we would want to be testing out, testing out how some of this works, how people are really involved. Because all of a sudden, we see now it's private sector, private sector, but nobody, no public sector. This, all the community organizations in this community also have lost money, have also had to undergo stress. If this is a balanced thing and the new progressive look is that we're all in this, then we better be all in it and the money has to be all in it too. Resources have to move to the local not-for-profits, block associations, senior centers, all these groups that are involved with the quality of life of this community. It's not just businesses that are affected, these people also have jobs. So I'm just saying, I'm concerned about the politics of the push and why, I don't see it. Why? And let's test, let's test out for a year and have people involved so we can then look at, is it working? Why make it permanent?
So I can take a stab at this. I'm Carolene Grossman from the Department of City Planning. Thank you all again for both allowing us to be here and for your really thoughtful feedback. So in terms of why we're moving ahead with the text amendment component of this right now, part of that is because the text amendment and changing zoning is a really long process and the emergency order that we're operating under right now is not certain. And so when we showed you the map of all of the restaurants that are currently operating, the vast majority of those, if we, if the, if the emergency ended tomorrow and we were able to turn back on the old Department of Consumer and Workforce Protection Sidewalk Cafe program, many of those restaurants could apply under the old rules. But almost 100 in your community board and thousands all over the city wouldn't even have that opportunity. And so we are moving in part because we don't want to be able to, we want to not leave restaurants in the lurch with no opportunity to access a sidewalk cafe program. Now that does not set aside some of the really important work that needs to be done in creating the new program and really setting it as a separate program from the emergency. So I also just want to really underscore what Julie and Ale mentioned, which is this is not a grandfathering of the emergency condition. Under the pre-COVID program, sidewalk cafes had an administered program by DCWP. Diagrams were sent to that agency, applications were sent to the community board and there was a process associated with that review. That has not been possible in the emergency condition, but a version of that will be returning in the post-emergency condition. We are looking at the ways to streamline that program to make it not extraordinarily onerous since that is feedback that we've received. But it will protect that fundamental application and ability to review restaurants on the sidewalk on an individual basis. So I want to both say we're moving on the text amendment, which is really about getting out of the way for that very specific class of restaurants that will have no other way to participate in sidewalk cafe programs if the emergency ends, but also making sure that the future program before sidewalk and then also for roadway, which is even more, you know, in development and the community boards will have more opportunities to talk about and is not affected by this text amendment in front of you. But, you know, to make sure that those programs really do learn from the lessons of the emergency and making sure that they both allow restaurants opportunities and can work with quality of life issues.
Thank you. Douty?
Yes, thank you. My first question is a procedural question. Are you expecting a letter or a vote from us before or by September, the September 27th deadline? Ms. Patty Diaz?
Yeah, can you repeat that question, please?
Yes, I was under the impression that this is not just something that you're here talking about on an open-ended basis and maybe meeting with different committees. If I understood, and I may be wrong, that the land, that you would be coming to the land use committee at our early September meeting and that you will be expecting us to vote on whether to give our approval and that the community board will be voting on this in September?
I can try another stab at this again, just to clarify again. What's in front of the board legally that the board may choose to vote on is the text amendment component itself, which opens the door to restaurants that were in previously prohibited areas potentially accessing a future program. What is not in front of the community board right now are any decisions about design, quality of life rules, how the roadway program will work, all of that is not an action in front of the board. If the board has feedback, they want to return to both city planning and the Department of Transportation. We welcome it, but that's not an action in front of you. Only the text amendment, which is this limited component of the, of the actions is in front of you right now.
Right, so I understand and so.
Your time running is correct.
So I think it's important for everyone on the board to understand that this is something that is going to be coming to a vote. And yes, it is the text amendment, whether to open this up to, to, you know, other restaurants. But it seems to me that once we, once we vote on that, I think, you know, the horse is kind of out of the barn. I think at that point, so, you know, who knows how much voice we'll have in the nitty gritty details. So I really hope everybody understands, this is not, we're going to be voting on this. And I do think that it's important for the city and for the board to understand that there is a growing number of people in our community too who are coming together and forming to protest this. There are a lot of people who are saying this is chaos. Nobody understands what the standards are for these cabins that there or the sheds that are being built. I don't know how you're going to enforce standards because I don't know if there are standards. I know that many times I'm walking and other people have said they're walking, as Tom said also, walking along the street. And frankly, I've been in situations where we've had to go like out into the street because you couldn't get through the, through the sidewalk. So I think there are a lot of safety concerns. I don't understand how. So I think there are a lot of safety concerns. I don't understand how it is that this is being done with little to no input from the citizenry. It's such a huge change. And it's so convenient to use COVID, which as, as the excuse and COVID was a good excuse and COVID was, and it was needed. Something was needed to save the restaurants. But going forward, I think you're exploiting COVID. That's my opinion.
Back it down.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the presentation. I have to say, first, I gonna repeat some of the things that my fellow board member have said. I also have to say that I've been particularly involved in regard to this issue. The SLA Review Committee knows very well, the Chair Tom Barrow, they know me so well, that together we spend hours until midnight, certainly not because I have pleasure to attend the committee, which I'm not part. But I was there to represent a portion of the community I represent, to the Greenpoint Coalition and, and the Block Association, they are under that umbrella. And one of the reasons was because what has been happening lately, even during COVID, and Tom Barrow can confirm that, as a matter of fact, we've been talking about crisis, but we have seen a proliferation of legal license. So the retail landscape in Greenpoint, for example, in Williamsburg, has been dominated by a mono industry. And why is this happening? Because even during COVID, when some businesses were impacted, definitely the open program, restaurant program was helpful to them, is becoming an opportunity to take a very small store from 200 square feet, 300 square feet, that were creating that business retail diversity. They were creating that 10 minutes walk neighborhood, which we've been talking about. And now they became an opportunity because this is creating the condition to expand the footprint. We have right now application, which we are, I had to use the word battling, it's a terrible word to use, but definitely we are dealing with the community. Some of our committee members tonight, they live in the same street, like in Greenpoint, Greenpoint Historic District, you know. So one first question, how is that possible? These shed, these structure are compatible with the character of any historic district? I mean, I study architecture and urbanistic is not my field, but I did tons of urban study to, to understanding, I'm a naturalized American. I'm, you know, I'm a European originally. Everybody's been talking about, oh, this is something they do in Europe, this is something they do in Italy. I'm Italian. I grew up in historic district. And to be honest with you, yes, you have the table, but you had the table, you had outdoor space, you know, where? In Square, in historic Square. You know, there is no amplified music and also there is no dead bar culture that we have here, you know? You go, you sit in the restaurant and, and the patron, they don't want to hear the music. You hear the clanking of the plate and the fork many times.
I just want to add, Eric, also public safety, because we're going to have all the development in our neighborhood, but if we don't have the confidence you're safe to walk the streets, it's self-sufficient. So I think we need to have.
Who's speaking? You have that.
We have neighbors.
William Vega. You gotta wait to call your name.
Public safety.
William Vega, Vega.
He's talking to somebody else. He wasn't talking to the full committee. So this is one of the things I want to point. So historic district landmark, what about the historic character of our historical national district? I don't think they're in tune because I have to be very careful how I change the window and I've done compliant to the landmark. And I'm also, I sit on the landmark committee, ACB1. So to me, it would be definitely, I understand in a time of emergency. So we have emergency economic development, the future of our neighbor is completely becoming a mono industry. This is predatory. It's predatory because an industry, which is the entertainment industry, I'm assuming powerful as much as the, the real estate development industry, that is taking a full domination. And you are complicit that. And also our council office are complicit with this methodology, which really, these, I spent so much time and so much work that the community has done and many of the board member, they know very well because they actually are impacted. Now, other example, because city planning, they should know very well, we have an historic district with these two-story house and we have this commercial overlay. Now, historically, a commercial overlay meant bakery. So we had right now an application with 200 square feet and 94, frankly. That was a bakery. What that means, after, maybe it was a bakery, but it became a cafeteria, it closes 7 o'clock. Automatically, the size of the space and the fact that there was no activity, it was compatible in tune with the predominantly residential district. Now we have an application for a taqueria, I want to be outside and people live on the ground floor. The ground floor, there are windows with a bedroom. How is that compatible? That a structure could be out there with 50 people out there drinking.
Okay, Santo, do you have a question for the presenters?
No, I, I believe like every board member point tonight, I have criticism. And beyond this criticism, there are many questions. That's why I have the question, Chairperson. You know, you know, we're talking, it's been a surge of dining outdoor. What, what are these words meaning? They are good for an industry, the residential, the citizen are completely dismissed. So I'm the Chair of the outreach committee, this has to come to the outreach committee because I know already that there is no desire from the community to have this type of impact. That I can tell you. And, and so I'm certain, but we need to organize outreach. These are, is the competence of many committee. This can be thought about to be resolved and the text amendment is just the way to open a door and to create the path and the channel to, to have this predatory legislation taking place. And I'm going to battle personally to the end, outside of this committee, I'm already doing it. It seems that I'm an N B C against the legal license. I'm not against the legal license. And then we have another issue very important and the Chair of the SLA Committee can confirm that, that we have a proliferation in, against the 500-foot law. So right now, we, there was an application, it was denied by the community board.
Okay, Santo, we got other people that want to make.
I understand, but if 500-foot law needs, if this program ever get approved, that it needs to be linked to the 500-foot law. Because that's how we'll automatically will redimension the quantity of this outdoor structure, which they have impact with people outside there, outside a window. That's, it's very complex, it's very intricate, and that's why this has to come to many committee that have to come together to organize and to discuss extensively. That's all. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Santo. I understand your passion. There's a lot of people here with your passion. William Vega.
It's more than my passion. It's little less night, until midnight, attending committee meeting and committee meeting. Every week, every week, I spend all day. I have to not give time to my work, to stay on the phone and to coordinate committee.
I understand, Santo. We appreciate all the work you do. Thank you so much. William Vega.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I just want to say is that I understand the R G C that's helped the restaurants, but they have failed. There's no enforcement. What they've been building is sidewalk cafes and closed. I see them with electricity, gas lines. I see them two stories high. They've been breaking all the Department of Buildings rules and regulations by not filing for electrical or gas or construction permits. And they're not safe. I mean, they're on Graham Avenue, this is an area which I've called for enforcement. There's not even a foot to walk, not even a foot. So you see, women with baby carriages going out to the street because they're very young mothers, they don't know. They're not, you know, smart enough to realize you don't put yourself and your baby at risk. You have senior citizens having to walk all around because they can't go across the sidewalk.
No put downs of people, please.
No, 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 that's not on that. I'm just talking about ADA issues.
Jan, respect, respect the speaker, please.
And it's, so it's breaking federal law, city law, and it's public safety. How can you let people build grills on the sidewalk, bars on the sidewalk, and there's no enforcement whatsoever? And I can count about 20 in about 15 block radius from where I live. So I, there is no enforcement whatsoever and heaven forbid someone dies because it really is the city's responsibility because they are letting, that they haven't done zero enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Anna McDowell.
Chairwoman, I'd like to say something. It's Mary O'Donoghue.
Yeah, I didn't see your hand. I didn't see no more board member hand up. Okay, go ahead.
I have it on, but I guess maybe you don't see the light. I would just.
My hands up too, Chair.
I see it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. May I go on?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to make a few comments. I think we've all been empathetic during COVID to help out restaurants. But we are now seeing a proliferation of rats, particularly in people's backyards. We are seeing garbage strewn all over the streets, which is attracting them. We are also seeing roving bands of entertainers that go from corner to corner or restaurant to restaurant and play music with amplified music. And there is also entertainment during the day, during brunch hours, that causes huge applause and screaming and all kinds of banging. And also, how many of these huts are enough on four corners? If you've got three corners taken up by these restaurant huts, to me, that's, that seems to be a little bit in excess. So there should be a regulation for at least one per four corners. Three is too much, four is too much. All of these things need to be put into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Eric?
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, just to pick up on Mary's point, so first, I want to echo all the, all the comments of the fellow board members in their concerns. And, you know, this is mostly going to fall to, to Tom's committee, although it will touch transportation only because by default it will. But I think if you're asking us to vote on a text amendment, before we have real rules of the road to expand this program, I think you're putting the cart before the horse. And there's a, you know, there has to be, like William said, like Mary said, there has to be regulation and Tom. And there has to be regulation on how these are going to operate. So it would make more sense to evaluate the ones that exist before we ask for a text amendment to expand into other areas. And, you know, and, you know, you have to also rein in the frontage. So right now, they can, they, if, if they have the whole block, they could put a park, they could put a structure across the whole parking stream of the block. Not that that's true, but there are like pies and thighs. They have a corner shop. They're putting it on one side and they're putting it on the other, right? Now, there has to be a, there just has to be regulation. They can't, the existing ones, I get it. COVID, look, I, I work at a shop. We have a modest little seating area with eight seats out front. It works for us, it kept us going. But, you know, but then I see these huge sheds and a sidewalk cafe. And now they have indoor dining. It's, it's, it really is out of control. So before you ask us to vote on a text amendment, you know, DOT and whatever other city agencies have really got to come up with rules of the road on how these are going to operate. And they also have to scale back the ones that exist now to conform with non-emergency matters. And I want to point out to you that in CB1, and I'm sure this is true of other neighborhoods and boards in the city, parking is at a premium. And we are like, you know, hammer and tong at each other in this, in this neighborhood for the past year, just over regular open streets. And now you're going to expand the, the open restaurants program just to exacerbate tensions that are already very high, very high. And so, you know, they have to be reined in, there has to be more regulation before you ask for us to vote on a text amendment. And there has to be consideration for parking because, you know, we're also losing parking under the B Q E. You know, this, there's, it's a huge burden on the community. I mean, it's like a thousand spaces. If, if I, if I'm judging by your, your math of the number of spots that have just opened during the pandemic, you know, you're taking up two, three parking spots. You know, parking is at a premium here. And I understand Vision Zero is trying to like reduce the amount of cars. But the reality is, is that the people that have the cars in the neighborhood, the majority of them need those cars to like get to work because they've lived here forever and that's, that's, you know, how, how they operate, et cetera, et cetera. So you really have to take these into consideration, take these things into consideration before you come to us with a text amendment, asking to expand a program that is not regulated almost at all. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
See you at a future transportation committee meeting.
Anna McDowell.
He's not in the, the list anymore.
Francois Oliveras.
She's here, Francois. Francois, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Um, so part of the Greenpoint Coalition and also one of the co-founders of the North Brooklyn Small Business Owners. It's a grassroots group of independent small businesses in North Brooklyn. So a couple of concerns. The first is that our streets are considered public space. And where the, the concept of the open restaurants made sense in the height of the pandemic, what's happening now is that our public space is being utilized for private profit. And for some of the restaurants, you know, it's doubling or tripling their square footage. So is there some type of taxation that's going to be part of the legislation that would go back into benefiting the community as well before? Basically, traffic studies also need to be done because the way some of the shacks are being built, they're really, they block drivers, they're blocking cyclists and pedestrians from being able to safely cross the streets. I think, you know, somebody had said that young mothers are not smart, which I disagree, strongly disagree with because they enter the, the roadways. But what's really happening is that there is no place for people with strollers or in wheelchairs to, to crawl safely. And that's happening all over our district. So I really think there needs to be a cohesive walkthrough done with DOT and residents and probably with the, with small business owners as well as maybe the chamber to understand the lay of the land. You know, and I think I look at Franklin Street, which I guess is considered a commercial quarter, but is actually very much a residential street. And so there, there's some major qual.
Please summarize.
Sorry, some quality of life issues there. So yeah, I guess just trying to understand how public space becomes private for profit.
This is Julie from DOT. Thanks for that question and those comments. And I think, you know, this is something we've really thought about over the past many months. Our engineers have been working to put together guidelines on exactly what this program will require in terms of our structures. We are looking like very, very much into a lot of these issues that you've mentioned. And also just want to clarify that a lot of the rules from the DCWP program, the previous sidewalk cafe program will be brought into this program. So it's not a lawless program. We are very much thinking about all of these guidelines and rules that, that you've mentioned and feel very similar, that we can't just have this program continue without any sort of enforcement. So similar to what I had said before, we are very much ramping up our enforcement team. This is something that will, you know, have, have a dedicated group of people just going out and inspecting these structures, inspecting the sidewalk portion and the roadway portion of this program, making sure that everyone is in compliant, that these structures are ADA sound and engineered in a proper way, that, that they are safe. So I think many of the comments that you're bringing up are excellent points and things that we are thinking about.
Thank you. Charlotte Jensen. Is she here, Marie?
Chair Fuller, can I just ask if they can talk about the use of public space turning into a private for-profit?
Yes, this is something that, again, we are looking at and working with City Hall and the City Council on. We, we have talked about a number of different fee structures and are working to figure out exactly how to make this program accessible for everyone, but still gaining some, some fees from it for the city.
And how will the square footage be reviewed?
It's, it's undetermined right now, but part of the structure that we're looking at in terms of fees.
And will those fees be put back into the community and how will transparency happen so residents can see what's going on?
Again, we don't have the full structure just yet. As we have more information, happy to come back and share it with you. But right now, we are still evaluating exactly what that structure will look like.
And I just want to add.
Excuse me, we have, we have, you want to do what? We don't have to, we don't have to make this short because we have items that we have to vote on and we don't want to lose our form because. And we don't want to lose our form because these items has to be voted on tonight. So if you have answers or questions, please make them short.
Oh, oh, only wanted to add that I think when we think about the design regulations and the difference between a structure that is open physically to the sidewalk and to the and to the street. That that's part of how we also address those issues of privatization. And I think we at City Planning are very, very concerned and are helping to design those rules with an eye to making sure that any sidewalk cafe really is a contributor to the street. And that we don't end up with, as people have correctly referred to as shacks, you know, as a permanent condition.
Thank you, Carol. Marie, were you able to unmute um, Charlotte? Marie?
I'm trying to find her.
She says she's there. She need to be unmuted.
Charlotte?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, great, great. Hi, um, I'm Charlotte Jensen, owner of Shea's Oscar and an advocate for outdoor dining. I've been eager to serve outdoors again since 2016, when my restaurant of 18 years was forced to move to a corner without commercial overlay. It was removed in 2006 during the Bloomberg administration to enable big developers to better build big boxes with lower interest loans and tax breaks. That's the only reason we lost our commercial overlay. The administration also quintupled fees on outdoor dining, creating another barrier for many really small restaurants. In 2020, the pandemic changed that situation for me and so many others, making outdoor dining inclusive again and expanding it. Putting out tables in June was cathartic. We could give our employees more shifts and rehire front of house and even our bartender back. Outdoor dining is the most beneficial policy to come from the pandemic. It saved 100,000 jobs and rather than a handout, it's an opportunity. As the program was unpredictable, as the program was unpredictable and kept changing, it was hard to invest. But I realized my goal is to serve my community as best I can, protect pedestrians, neighbors, staff and customers. First with sandbag filled structures, wood structures, then carports, but now praying for permanence. I designed a light, strong steel structure with generous overhang to take up minimal street space, protect pedestrians, staff and patrons. It doesn't shake or move when trucks or buses pass by. I invite you to come. It didn't move in the recent storms. It shelters all from rain. Clear roofing lets it lets in lots of light, so it's not overbearing. Every day pedestrians walking by give us kudos and shout outs. I'd love to collaborate and support good legislation to enable effective designs from shelter to heating. This pandemic silver lining, the chance to make outdoor dining inclusive, equitable and affordable with effective designs and opportunities for all restaurants. I encourage CB one and the community to support a permanent outdoor dining program. A video of the plight of us 12 restaurants without commercial overlay has been emailed along with pics of the design described. That's what I wanted to say. And I, and we're a group of over 30. And none of us ever had the right because the Bloomberg administration took it away and made outdoor dining an exclusive club so that big developers could bring in giant boxes and get rid of small businesses. So please don't put us in the same box as those. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte.
I appreciate your time.
You have anything else to add to your presentation?
Alice, I have something, Dell.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to say that I don't think it's fair to put, you know, put this um, deadline on us. We are, as a community board, our board is going to have to vote by in our September meeting. And you are asking us to vote on this this amendment, the zoning text amendment. When you admit that you have, there are so many particulars that you just don't, don't have an answer for. So you're asking us to do this. I think it's really unfair. And I think you're putting us in a position where we may have no choice but to just uh, reject it. So I just ask everybody on the board here, remember all these things we're talking about tonight. Because it looks like we are going to have to vote on it in September. Thanks for talking.
Thank you. Do you have any closing remarks? That concludes your presentation.
Yeah, just to recap, our willingness to come back in September to have questions on the text amendment. Um, to both the Land Use Committee and the Transportation Committee. Um, I, I sympathize uh, with the sentiment of the difficult timeline, especially during the summer. Uh, coming back uh, from or still going through the pandemic while also um, so you're surfacing also the the new minimum rules uh, I and the all the projects that are getting certified on the district. I know it's it's challenging. Um, please understand also that part of the city wait text amendment would have put it in front of you. Um, are also trying to help uh, the city moving forward. Uh, part of the reason also we're here is to hear your comments, your suggestions. So all of them related to the text amendment, including timing. Please consider them to be included in a letter that um, we can submit and put into consideration for the City Planning Commission. Um, it, you know, we can do our best work to to transmit all these opinions and everything we hear in these meetings. Uh, but it's always best if we have um, your statements in writing. And it's strong for the City Planning Commission and the and also the City Council uh, to take it into consideration. Um, when they're making this type of decisions. Again, thank you for giving us the time to be here and to present this project and um. And Dell, you know, I'm available to answer any questions in in the email and to uh, the deck is available for review. I saw middle of Friday uh, to the board. And I wish you a happy summer and that you stay safe for you and your loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you put your, thank you. Could you put your information in the chat where people can send their comments?
Uh, I think, do we have a a DL for?
I think it was on your presentation. I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay. We'll put those links in the chat.
Thank you. Enjoy the remainder of your summer. Next item on this agenda is uh, Trench Town Rock Corporation. Doing doing business as Trench Town. Is anybody here to present on that item?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, just before they, um, everybody on the board, this is a liquor license application for a location that has more than 250 patrons. Our rules are that they have to make a presentation to the full board. So anybody who has questions can ask them tonight. So when the committee reviews them at our meeting at the end of this month, we have the input from the full board. So they're coming tonight to make a presentation about their uh, location that they're asking for a liquor license for. So please listen and ask them questions so we know what to do with them at the committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. And please, when you ask your questions, do not disguise them as short stories. We got uh, we got votes that we have to take tonight and we do not want to lose our form. So please do not disguise your questions as short stories. You may continue, Ms.
Um, I just want to thank you all for allowing me to present this evening. Um, I'm trying to show my video. I don't know if you can see me. I don't know what's going on here. Um, but am I able to share my screen so I can present my PowerPoint?
Marie, give her permission to share a screen.
Yes, it's it's going through.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So just to give you a little bit of background about me, my name is Christina Bailey. I um, am currently working as a senior project engineer for Skanska. I have a master's degree in urban planning. Um, I have a background in music. I have performed um, and traveled as a background vocalist for uh, Cool in the Gang and several other um, you know, really cool bands. Um. And so the concept behind, I is, hold on, I'm just trying to share my screen. Here we go. And you, can you all see? Hello, can you all? Perfect. Um, I just wanted to give you some background uh, into the concept behind my restaurant. My grandmother moved here from uh, Jamaica. Um, and she moved here in the 90s and started a uh, Caribbean restaurant. My father followed in her footsteps and owned several Caribbean restaurants. Um, and I now would love to follow in the family footsteps uh, and open a Caribbean restaurant uh, at 134 Metropolitan Avenue. This space um, is amazing because it has a live stage. It's already been built out. Um. And I thought of what better opportunity to incorporate my background, my history and my love for um, music. Um, yes, I know there is some pushback, but I do just want to speak to um, several of the residents that came on. The intent for the space is not to be a club, not to blast music. Trench Town is not intended to be any of um, any of what its previous uh, I guess tenants were. We want to um, open a full service Caribbean restaurant. Um, and it's incorporate some of our background. Like I said, my father is from, he actually grew up in Trench Town and we all know the famed Bob Marley is from Trench Town as well. And the venue will um, the venue will um, include music from uh, R and B to reggae to um, you know, some neo soul. But it it definitely won't have any rock or hip hop or anything that, you know, I don't anticipate being a um, a nuisance to the neighbors. I know there was a lot of soundproofing that was done, that was put in place from um, that was already put in place. But we are happy to take additional measures to sound, do some test runs and soundproof the space um, even more if we need to. Um, so I already went through the concept. I've included some images just so that you can get an idea of what we intend to how we intend to design, design the space. Uh, again, I, as I mentioned, we have, we will include some traditional Caribbean dishes um, that will be fused with um, you know, some Americans, some Asian. Uh, we have a really famed um, chef. He actually won the Martha Stewart's Edition of Chopped. Um, he's, you know, so uh, just I didn't mention my father. I did mention actually that my father has some, he has 25 plus years in the restaurant business. He um, is now consultant, consulting new restaurant owners. So he has a ton of resources. Um, and a ton of um, uh, a ton of people that he can go to from chefs to um, bartenders, to mixologists and the like. Um. So our team would be me. I have 10 years experience in the restaurant industry, just from helping my father run his uh, his restaurants. I also managed uh, Milk River uh, Brooklyn for some time. Um, and helped them win a couple of open table awards and Zagat accolades. Um, my father, he would be offering his support as a consultant to uh, the restaurant. Um, as I mentioned, we have our chef Vladimir Lebrun, who uh, is one of Martha Stewart's chopped edition. And we have our mixologist Miguel Aranda. He's worked with, he's worked and helped open several uh, restaurants and design their drink menus. So here's uh, an idea of what our menu would look like. Uh, we have uh, well, we have an image that's displayed. This is actually an image that um, from one of my father's older restaurants. Um, this is uh, some pepper shrimp. Um, like I said, we'd like to include some traditional uh, Caribbean dishes and this is definitely one. Um, our venue, we plan on running traditional dinner service hours. So um, Monday through Thursday will be 5:00 PM to 11:00, Friday and Saturday, 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Uh, Sunday, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Uh, we would like to offer some brunch service, Saturday and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Um, the music, as I mentioned, would be acoustic, jazz, reggae, R and B. Uh, there will be some background music um, that's played throughout the restaurant. You know, we don't anticipate there being a a band every single night. We don't anticipate, you know, we have to actually pay these bands. We don't anticipate having a band every night or every weekend. So there will just be background music. I did put on my application that there won't be a DJ, but it was brought to my attention that if for some reason a band, uh, an artist or a performer does not have um, a band accompanying them, they would have to have their track music for some live performances. And there will have to be either a DJ or a sound engineer that accompanies them. Um, as I mentioned, there's already a significant amount of soundproofing in place. Um, but we are happy just to make the residents and the neighbors happy to do a couple of test runs, add some additional soundproofing, whatever needs to be done. We want to form a um, a unity with with the neighborhood. We definitely don't want to come in and be um, be a nuisance and not be welcome. Um, that's not our intent. Our intent is to just be, bring great food, bring great food. Um, bring great music, great energy and a good time for our guests. I fully believe just from my experience in the restaurant industry that it's not just about the food. It's really about the experience that you create for the guests. That's what keeps them coming back. As far as security for the size venue, we absolutely know that we will need security. Um. My father, as I mentioned, has um, a network of security companies. Uh, they're state licensed and bonded. Um, we will submit our security roster to the local precincts and coordinate with them and um, you know, just be in compliance with all of what their rules and guidelines are for the neighborhood. We will have a security guard during dinner service without a doubt. We'll have a security guard at on the rooftop anytime the um, the rooftop is open. Um, and as I mentioned, will comply with all local NYPD recommendations. As far as crowd handling, I heard that that was a concern. And if we're having performances, they will definitely not, they'll definitely run between the hours of eight to 11, 12, the latest. It will only be for dinner service. They'll always be scheduled. Uh, we can we've, so like I mentioned, my father's done this before. We've done this. Um, you know, we'll schedule anyone who's attending the shows will have to make reservations for the show so that there's no lines that, you know, of people just showing up. Uh, and well, this last line here for social distancing, I don't know if that's necessary. It may be with the new Delta variant, but we'll see. And we're happy to comply with all state guidelines. As far as the rooftop, we're aware of the eight foot fence perimeter and we want to add additional precautions um, by adding planters. As you see in the images that I added here on the the PowerPoint, add additional planters around um, as a diff, as as another security measure. There are already two egresses on the rooftop and there will be a full service menu as well. So the certificate of occupancy is 343 guests, 218 on the main floor, 60 on the mezzanine, 55 on the rooftop and 10 in the um, cellar, which we don't anticipate anyone being in the cellar unless they plan on going back and forth to the restroom. As far as marketing, it would be word of mouth, of course, social media, grassroots promotion. Our goal is to build relationships within the community, as I said, and promote healthy and profitable alliances with local businesses. I did, as far as my research, um, I've done a um, a 500 radius search and I didn't see that there were any Caribbean restaurants or live music venues. And just from my um, I I was on foot when I was getting signatures. The feedback that I received from the neighbors is that they would welcome Caribbean food and um, a live music venue because there is a need for it in the, in that area. I know there's elite that's next door, but they don't offer um, live music and they don't have Caribbean cuisine. I included our floor plans just so that you can see and the kitchen concept. We do have to include and build a kitchen. Um, and so just to mention, just to go back to the previous um, tenants. I know there was, the the history was that they intended on putting in a steakhouse and they did not actually run a steakhouse. They ran like some sort of club. Um, but that was the red flag right there was that they didn't have a kitchen, kitchen. We um, 100% intend on including a kitchen. Um. And here's the concept of our kitchen. Uh, we, you know, in order to run a full service restaurant, you do need a kitchen. So we will have a kitchen in this, in the venue. We do have intentions of building, uh, building out a kitchen. We have no intentions of running a club. We, we love the restaurant business. We love the restaurant industry. And we're just happy to, you know, bring our history and our culture and our cuisine to the neighborhood. And um, that is it for my presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I don't see any hands.
My, my hand is raised.
Okay, Brian, so sorry.
No worries. Um, I had a, a few questions. I'm going to list them real quick. They're not short stories. I, I saw that on the main floor, there's like. I, I saw that on the main floor, there's like, I forget the number, two hundred and something, um, is the allowed number of people. Is that, how many people actually are sitting at the tables? It's hard to see, um, like, the three hundred and forty-three guests, how many can actually sit down at, at tables? On all, is that, and then, what are your hours? And what, when you said you did, you went out and got signatures, I'm curious what times and how often, and how many hours you spent, and what doors you knocked on.
Okay, uh, as I, I mentioned on the previous slide, our dinner service hours would be from five, uh, let me bring the slide back up just to our visual. Five P Monday through Thursday, five P M. to eleven P M. Friday and Saturday, five P M. to one A M. Sunday, five P M. to ten A M., and we'd like to offer brunch as well, Saturday and Sunday from eleven A M. to four P M. Um, as far as the, um, as far as capacity, I'm sorry?
So are you asking to go on the roof until one A M. in the morning?
Um, yes, there's, you know, the, the roof is a fifty-five, uh, fifty-five capacity. I know that we can't go to full capacity. So, um, I, yes, I do, I would like, if guests would like to come and dine on the roof, if it's a beautiful day. Um, yeah, I, I don't see why, um, we wouldn't keep the rooftop open. It's a gorgeous view from the rooftop.
And then what, what, what days, what, where, what was your, how did you get signatures? How many signatures did you get from the neighbors? And what doors did you knock on, and when did you do the, the signature?
I went, um, so I, just to be transparent, I was, I called the community board a thousand times, just for clarity. This is my first time with the community board. Um, I received, by the time I received notification that we were going in front of the community board, I was limited on time because I was away, so I went out on foot, I want to say two, two or three nights, evenings, um, after work. I do work and have kids, so I went two or three evenings, I want to say about five to seven. I walked the, um, I walked the, you know, just the, the blocks up and down and around, so one thirty-four, there's one thirty-fourth, and then there's North First. Um, the building goes from one thirty-fourth Metropolitan to North First, so I went around, um, I also went around to, um, I'm just, just getting my bearings in the area as well. Uh, so I did probably about a four, four, four-block radius. I know that they said they wouldn't approve any signatures outside of that. Um, how many signatures? I want to say twelve to fifteen, but the last time I presented, I was told my signatures, um, were enough, and the amounts suffice. If, if I didn't get that, uh, clarification, I definitely would have gone out and gotten additional signatures before this meeting, but I was told in the last meeting that my signatures were okay.
Thank you. Um, Mary O'Dama, Rick?
Have a question.
No, I don't have any questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Bailey, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Welcome to Williamsburg. This is Tommy Torres, looking forward to attending your establishment.
Awesome.
Who, uh, loves the, um, the neighborhood. Uh, we have, and we, thank you for bringing that flavor to, uh, to Williamsburg, right around the corner to the Puerto Rican restaurant. Uh, and I've been, I've been working with them. Uh, just make sure you, uh, connect with, uh, the local precinct, the community officers. I think Tom Burrows will tell us. I think it's the Ninety F and Officer Melendez. I know that the Puerto Rican, um, establishment there has been getting a lot of complaints about noise, and when you compare that to some of the other restaurants on that block, right on the corner from you, it's a, it's a little different. They've been getting a lot of complaints, so just check in with them, make sure that, uh, um, you know, any issues that you may have, or any complaints that they might have in three-one-one, uh, could be settled, but, uh, we welcome you, and we're looking forward to, to, um, you know, attending your place.
I really do appreciate that. Thank you. And any, any feedback and guidance that I could get so that this can be like a, a really good, um, relationship with the, the neighborhood. I'm, I'm open to it.
Uh, Madam Chair, can I be recognized? Santo Mitrilia?
Adele. Dale, your hand is up.
Yes, uh, my, my, uh, good, good evening. My concern is about the rooftop, and I, I understand that it's, it's a beautiful view, and it's a good, you know, um, amenity for you to have. However, you are also going to be surrounded by apartments, by people living right there, right, right against your rooftop. So I'm concerned about how you're going to take into account the effect that the noise on your rooftop is going to have on the people who are living around you, especially if you're open till one A M.
Well, what only people-
I'm sorry, let me just interrupt you. Christina, can you please take your presentation down?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, let me figure out how to do this. Stop sharing. Okay. Alrighty. Can you all see me? Because I'm sho- I'm showing my video.
No, we cannot see you.
No, no, I can't, I can't see you.
I don't know what's going on with my video. It's not, it's still blacked out. It's strange. Okay. Is anyone talking? I'm, I don't hear anything.
No, I'm, I'm waiting for, uh, for-
Waiting for an answer.
My question about how are you going to take into account the effect that the, the, the noise from your rooftop has on the, um, surrounding apartments, the people living right around there, especially if you're planning on being open till one A M.?
Well, we'll only be open on Friday and Saturday. We definitely will consider the fact that we have, you know, working professionals. I'm a working professional. I have young children. Um, like I said, the goal is not to be a nuisance. Um, and as far as the rooftop, I mean, we, like, we won't have any live music or anything. It'll just be back, black, background music. So if there any, is any sort of noise, I think it would just be, you know, our guests laughing or talking. Um, but I guess, I guess the best thing that we can do is kind of just, kind of work cohesively with the residents, and if it, if we really become a problem, then figure out maybe we can move our time up on the roof to twelve or, uh, um, eleven P M. But I mean, you know, you know, people like to be social, you know? We, we're not doing it all, we're not doing it all night, all week. Um, it's, it's just two nights a week until, until one, one A M., but we are totally open to, um, considering, you know, the residents.
Ms. Bailey, we are very concerned about the quality of life and the effect that the rooftop restaurants are having on the people who live right next to them, and to expect people to listen to noise and even back, background music till one A M., um, is not necessarily going to endure you with the community. And the, uh, other restaurant that's, that's in the building next to you right now is having a lot of difficulties because they're not, apparently not being responsive to the noise complaints of the people around.
Okay, uh, thank you. Julie? Julia Foster? I don't, I don't see, I don't hear. A hand is up. Okay, Santo.
Yeah, my end is not working, so sorry to intrude like that.
The hands are working, just gotta press it.
Uh, no, no, it doesn't show up entirely. Uh, it's a malfunction for some reason. I don't have the end at all.
Okay, go ahead. Ask your question.
So now my, my question is, it's a little bit out of the range, uh, you know, Greenpoint, where, uh, I know very well, you know, and, uh, I would have monitored a little bit more strictly, but I have a question, uh, about the roof, the capacity. You said about fifty people, fifty-five people before?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I'm sorry?
Uh, you said how many people you will have on the roof, uh, fifty-five people?
Well, that's the capacity for the roof, so I know we obviously can't go to full capacity, so I put on the application that we anticipate going up to forty.
To forty, and so it will be only sitting people, not standing, and there is no, uh, there is, there is a bar, uh, on the roof?
Uh, there is a bar on the roof, um, and there will be some dining tables, but there will also be some booths just for lounging.
But the requirement would be strictly only, uh, seated people. Nobody could stand up, right?
Well, that's impossible. People have to stand up to walk to the door, to the restroom.
Yeah, well, you know, I want to make a point, gen- generally, uh, because we, you know, something very important. Uh, I don't know how that portion of the community is organized. I believe Ryan Conan lived there, maybe other people that are more impacted, and so I've been doing a lot in our portion of the community, and I heard, for example, doing outreach and signing petition. Uh, in our portion of this community, definitely, we're in contact with all the building. I could immediately, uh, generate a petition in favor if the, the resident would have been in favor or against, or been against. So it's very important seeing the nature of your, uh, business, your venue, you have a roof. These are very high impact for quality of life. Uh, I don't know exactly if you are a five-hundred-foot trigger, so that's definitely, you know, will make you qualified to, uh, to see really if there are, uh, community benefit, because quality of life here is definitely an issue. People likes to sleep, and, uh, and so I believe those are very important things. You should target building by building. In this case, the, uh, the petition should be dedicated, and I'm, hopefully, some board member may have connection to put you in contact, to really understand. I'm assuming also a few here tonight, it means you have a large number of people which, uh, have deep concern about this, and also, will you be willing, this is a question, uh, will you be willing, uh, with that community, which I don't know how organized, it may be already organized, to sign a support agreement? For example, in our portion on Greenpoint, uh, uh, we have, uh, business account for liquor license, especially be, business that they trigger five-hundred-foot rule, uh, uh, to move, to meet the organized community and to sign a support agreement, uh, which can be complementary to the, uh, to the stipulation of, uh, the S L A review of Community Board One, uh, but it can definitely list, uh, concern, and it can also, uh, uh, have you really making some extra step, uh, to make agreement with the immediate community there, because, uh, uh, the immediate one, just the one hour's next is not sufficient. I believe, what I understand, for the scale, and the roof is definitely a major, major trigger behind the five-hundred-foot rule or not. Those are my comment. Uh, so will you be willing to sign the, an agreement with the community? That's my question.
Uh, I'd be willing to sign an agreement, um, that is, uh, mutually beneficial to my business and the, and the community. I, I'm reading the chat, and it says, can I soundproof the roof? We're absolutely open to soundproofing or adding some sort of, like, um, cover, um, and possibly even soundproofing the cover. We're, we're open to taking all steps necessary to work with the community, and like I said-
Well, I, I hope you understand it. You see, when you, when you create a venue, because, uh, yes, you're gonna provide food, but you're gonna be a venue, it's not just what happened inside the space, which hopefully I wish all the space would be scientifically, ingeniously, uh, soundproofed, but it's also what you generate outside. There is movement of people. People may live on the ground floor. I believe next door, there is people two blocks down living on the, on the ground floor or on the first floor, so-
Okay, Santo, we're running out of time.
Yes, that's all. Thank you.
Can we just, sorry, it's Dana. Can I speak just very briefly?
Yeah.
My hand is up. Hi, okay, so just very, very briefly, Christina, first of all, I just want to acknowledge that there is one other Caribbean restaurant in the neighborhood. It's called Kokomo, um, and it's not too far away, but not, you know, down the block, um, and it might be worthwhile to connect with them, uh, because- Oh, you know Kokomo, okay.
We know the owner's there as well.
Okay, great. Kevin and Ria are amazing. I would just say, like, to kind of wrap this up, because it is nine-twenty, um, and, you know, you still have to do, if you wanted to connect offline with some of the community board members, I just emailed you. Um, I know Tom is really accessible and really great as a, he heads up the liquor license, to kind of help you think through about a plan to effectively communicate with the community about what you're trying to accomplish in this space, because it does seem as though you might be carrying some of the weight of previous bad actors.
Yeah.
So as it comes to move this along and ensure that you get the guidance that you need, um, perhaps there's a way to connect offline, because, you know, I, I'm definitely a proponent of bringing more, uh, Caribbean restaurant here, and, um, but again, it's nine-twenty, and we're not gonna accomplish anything like this right now, and I think this is more about, like, really face-to-face contact with neighbors and community board members to better understand the process, better build relationships, and then to come back for a vote.
And can I just, can I, I'm sorry to bust in, but I don't understand how the petitions at the meeting got okayed, because I live on Metropolitan, and no one knocked on my door, and I'm on the ground floor. Adele lives on Metropolitan. We live within, and normally, the, the restaurant is given a list of people they have to go back and talk to, like specifically Monarch Restaurant that is next door on this same block, was told that he had to get this signature from the Polish lady on the corner and the Polish person across the street, and I don't understand how someone who didn't talk to any of the people on the block, who live on the block, especially on the community board, got told that their petitions were okay, and I think that we have to say that she needs to go back and re-petition. We've had restaurants re-petition a million times. I, for, for elite, went and spent sixteen hours of my own time petitioning for them this winter because they were told their petitions were not enough, and I was in support. So I don't understand how a restaurant, where a lady walked around and didn't talk to any of the people, got told it was okay, except that maybe because the business, the landlord is Polish, Bogdan said, okay, go ahead, but something fishy happened when a restaurant that has eleven people was told they have to talk to the neighbors across the street. This thing needs, like, she needs to sit, like, yeah, this needs to be put on hold and rejiggered, because whatever happened at the last meeting was unfair compared to what every other restaurant has had to do, and totally biased toward a Polish landlord, which is-
That's why I'm saying, but I'm thinking, Ryan, that's why I'm saying what I'm saying, which is, let's, let's move this into a space where she can get guidance and go up, duck this correctly so that everybody feels good, like, that is, I'm just saying, that's not gonna happen right now on this call, right?
No, I know. It just has to be acknowledged that, and not be, be, like, the petitions were not okay. They were far from okay, and whoever told her that was, like, hallucinating.
Well, I, so like I said, I got that confirmation on the last, the last meeting, and I've been, I've called the community board a thousand times because I'm new to the-
I live at one forty Metropolitan. He did knock on anyone's door. I live at one forty-
Okay, Ryan, okay, Ryan. Okay, Ryan.
I was also told that I, um, need, didn't, I, I wasn't told that I needed to speak to every single resident within that five-hundred-foot radius. I wasn't told that. I was told that I-
Again, which is really funny, because when there was an Asian-owned restaurant trying to open, they were told that they had to talk to every Polish person that lived on the block, and they were given the address. So again, something funny is happening when a Polish landlord is, is suddenly fast-tracked, and their tenant, who's opening a two-hundred-plus restaurant, is told they're okay when they don't have a single petition from, like, again, thi- this thing needs to be put on pause, like, that's-
Okay, Ryan, okay, Ryan. It appears that's wrong information.
But your issue should be with the community board, Ryan, not with the, not with the person who's coming in and trying to start a business. That's all I'm saying. That's what, so I think this is an internal meeting that has to happen with the community board, that there are recommendations, and that there's a process that is clear across the board for everybody, but as our job to counsel the, the vendor, or the, the business trying to come in, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, but you have to understand that last time, we went through this whole process, they signed a thing, we did tours, and they never put in a kitchen, and never served a single meal, but had after-hours parties going from day one. So this landlord and this space-
Okay, okay, okay. Ms. Bailey, do you have, Ms. Bailey, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I, I just want to add that, um, I mean, I can submit my resume. I can submit all those things. I, like I said, I've been, I've emailed and been in contact with the community board, and was told that this was okay, and it's beyond, whatever's going on is beyond me. I'm only doing what I'm instructed to do. This is my first time in contact with the community board in this, in this way. I am, I have no ill intent or intent to be a nuisance, as I mentioned. I just want to follow my family's footsteps and incorporate the, the, my culture, the things that I love, music, and so on. I don't know about the history, and it's unfortunate that I'm coming into space with a bad history, but I don't want to follow in those footsteps. I'd like to have longevity, leave something behind for my children.
Okay, thank you so much. That concludes the presentation. Thank you so much. I hope you get everything worked out and get the right answers. Okay, that concludes our public session. And we're running out of time. We're running out of members. So everybody that has long, that was long-winded, I hope you stay because we can't afford to lose anybody else. We got to get these votes tonight. Okay, that concludes our public hearing. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gina Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Here.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Here.
Gina Barrows.
Here.
Tion Brooks. Eric Brusitis.
Here.
Tom Burrows.
Here.
Iris Cabrera.
Yeah.
Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Here.
Stephen Chesler. Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto.
Yeah.
Giovanni Damato.
Here.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski.
Here.
T. Willis Elkins.
Here.
Julia Amanda Foster. I see you waving, Julia. So noted. Chairperson Fuller.
Yeah.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Hurwitz.
Here.
Sonia Iglesia.
Here.
Moisha Endig. Bosana Kaminski.
I'm here.
Thank you. Ryan Conan. Ryan Conan. Yoel Landau.
I'm here. I'm here. Ryan.
Okay. Yoel Landau, Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yoel Lo. Trina McKiva.
I'm here.
Sante Miselli.
I'm here.
Toby Moskowitz. Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Niederman. Mary O'Dommerick.
I'm here.
Thank you. Janice Peterson.
Here.
Dana Racklin.
Here.
Thank you. Bella Sable.
Here.
Thank you. Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Dell Teague.
Here.
Tommy Torres. Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Here.
Maria Viera.
Present.
Thank you. Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser. Twenty-seven members answering the call.
Thank you, Jared. Since we only have twenty-seven members, we're going to go straight to the committee reports after we approve the agenda. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Motion. I second that. I was.
Who made the motion?
Dana.
Dana and Iris, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I approve all the minutes? Can I approve all the minutes?
Motion to approve. It's Dana.
Dana, is there, did there a second?
I second. Bosana Kaminski.
Bosana, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, land use.
Okay, thank you. So I have a bunch of things here. We had two meetings. The one was a regular committee meeting on June twenty-eighth. I'm going to basically just tell you what it was and, and hope that you read what I said about it and let you know what, what we voted on for the most part. So the first was, if you have a question, just, you know, ask. So the first was the citywide hotel tax amendment, where the hotels now would have to apply for a special permit and would have to come to the community board, go through a land use, you know, meeting, a special permit process and the land use and, and the community board would, would have to weigh in. We recommended that, that the community board send a letter of support to DCP. The vote was eleven yes, one recusal. So there were no objections to that. So I need a vote on that.
Okay, Sonia.
Okay, Sonia. We still, we can just, can we just do a blanket yes, no? Do you need, Jared, do we need a, we need a record?
If it's a land use item, if it's a land use item, it requires to be recorded how each member votes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Dell, this is the hotel tax amendment?
This is the hotel tax amendment and it's something we've been begging for, for years now.
And the committee is recommending approval, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks. Eric Brusitis. Thomas Burrows.
Yes.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Thumbs up is a yes from Ms. Foster. Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Hurwitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia. Sonia Iglesia. Moisha Endig.
Yes.
Sonia.
Bosina Kaminski.
Yes.
Ryan Conan.
Yes.
Yoel Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yoel Lo. Trina McKiva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Niederman. Mary O'Dommerick.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes, yes.
Dana Racklin. Dana Racklin. Bella Sable. Thank you. Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Dell Teague. Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera. Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser.
Yes. Hear me, Jerry?
We hear you, Simon. There's some background noise. Can people please mute themselves if you're not speaking?
Twenty-nine, favor, zero no, zero abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next one is a little more complicated. This is eight twenty-four Metropolitan Avenue. They asked to be able to, to offer zoning map amendment so that they could build an eight-story mixed-use building. They were going to have thirty-six residential dwelling units and then they were going to have, they were thinking of a supermarket on the ground floor. After they presented to the community board, they responded to concerns about the fact that there were no three-bedroom units. So they've now decreased their request to go to thirty-four units so they could have some three-bedroom units. There is a, an MIH option and instead of using, they're using option one instead of two so that there would be a better AMI. There would be a lower AMI. And they also agreed that they would switch their use of the ground floor from a supermarket to different usage that would better serve the area. So we had a lot of questions and answers, but ultimately, the recommendation was to approve with the following conditions. That the owner of the adjacent building at eight thirty-four Metropolitan Avenue will be named as a co-insured on the developer's insurance policy for the duration of the construction and there will be a liaison from the project for surrounding property areas with the phone number displayed. And the developer will also provide vibration monitors that are answerable to DOB. Second, that the air conditioners will not be vented to the outside facade of the building and noise mitigators will be utilized or passive house technology will be used. The third condition was the committee recommends dividing the commercial space and choosing a diverse selection of businesses that will serve the character of the neighborhood. The developer can reach out to Evergreen to locate local businesses that are in danger of displacement and, or even nonprofits that are potential tenants. So the vote was eight in favor, one recusal and one no, and I need a vote.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Chester, make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Who's second?
Trina.
Trina. Roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks. Eric Brusitis. Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. I got your thumbs up. Thank you. Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Hurwitz.
Yep.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Endig. Bosina Kaminski.
Yes.
Ryan Conan.
Yes.
Ryan Conan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Yoel Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yoel Lo. Trina McKiva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
No.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Niederman. Mary O'Dommerick.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Dell Teague.
Yeah.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser. Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Simon, Simon, mute yourself, please.
Twenty-seven yes, one no, zero abstention. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Next is fresh update. Another non-Yulev, Yulev, this is a citywide tax amendment to have a uniform criteria to encourage the construction of supermarkets in underserved areas. So I did go through the details and the recommendation was to write a support, a letter of support to DCP to, with a request for clarification regarding the enforcement mechanism for the perpetuity requirement when additional FAR is utilized. So if the, if the applicant chooses to use the incentive of some additional FAR, then the requirement to keep a supermarket there is in perpetuity. And we just wanted some clarification as to what the enforcement would be for that. The vote was ten yes and one abstention.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second William Vega.
Okay, Steve and William Vega, roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks. Eric Brusitis. Tom Burrows. Eric?
Yes. Yes, I said.
Thank you. We can hear you.
Okay, sorry.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera. Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
I said, yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Who was that? Iris?
Yes, that was me, Jerry.
Okay, thank you. Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciatto.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Julia, I don't see on screen. Okay, there you are. Thank you. Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Katie Denny Hurwitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Endig. Bosina Kaminski.
Yes.
Ryan Conan. Ryan Conan.
Yes.
Thank you. Yoel Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz. Yoel Lo. Trina McKiva.
Yes, yeah.
Sante Miselli. Sante? I can't hear you. Mr. Miselli?
Sorry, I was having difficulty. Sorry, I got distracted a second whip.
Jerry, yes, Tommy Torres.
I didn't get to you yet. Sante Miselli.
Yes.
I'm sorry? You're voting yes? Yes on the same. Thank you, Mr. Miselli. Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman. Rabbi Niederman. Mary O'Dommerick.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Dell Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Yes, again.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser. Twenty-eight, yes. Zero no, zero abstentions.
Okay, this is the last one from that meeting. This is again a non-Yulev. Health and fitness citywide tax amendment. Essentially, this is to reduce all the costly and time-consuming barriers to the establishment of gyms, spas and massage therapy businesses. So if this goes through, they will be allowed as a right in commercial and manufacturing districts up to ten thousand square feet. If it's really heavy-duty equipment, then they will be subject to DOB noise regulations. So we recommended that we write also a letter of support to DCP and ten yes, one no. I need a vote.
Motion approved. Steve Chesler.
I second.
Second.
Steve Chesler, Williams, roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows. Tion Brooks. Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera. Phil Caponegro. Phil Caponegro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Thank you. Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiricella, Teresa Censiata.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski. Arthur Dibinowski. T. Willis Elkins. Julia Amanda Foster. Thumbs up again, thank you. Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes, yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Bosina Kaminsky.
Yes.
Gina, I see you back on screen, how do you vote?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
This, this thing is like.
Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Libovitz, Yo Lo, Trina McKiva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli. Sante Miselli.
No.
Toby Moskovitz, Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Rackland.
Yes.
Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer, Robert Solano, Del Teague.
Yeah.
Tommy Torres. Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vietta.
Yes.
Thank you. Steven Weidberg, Simon Weiser.
Yes, yes.
Twenty-six, yes, one no, zero abstention, motion carries. If we lose one member, we lose the quorum.
Okay, so, this was the public hearing, please don't go away, we need a vote on this. Uh, we, the Land use Committee had a public hearing on July 8th, on the, uh, request for 957 Grand Street to, uh, to be able to construct a four-story, eight-unit residential building in an M11 district. This is for a variance, not a rezoning, for a variance. Let me just.
Are we gonna be voting on Greck tonight?
No. Janice, please, we have to vote on this, it, it's on the clock.
I don't need, I don't need to stay on the phone, if you, if you're gonna leave Greck an alert.
Greck is not an alert, Greck does not have to be voted on until September.
Yes, because they, it's a big, till September.
All right, this, this, it, it does not have to be voted on until September, it did not come before the, the, uh, Land use Committee yet.
Yeah, but there's mayors coming in, people are quite worried about what this all means, dear.
Okay, well, I have, listen, if the, if the board wants to vote on it tonight, fine, but please, we, uh, everybody, look, I, the people on the Land use Committee, when it came to two committee meetings, long meetings this month, this.
I'm willing, I just wanna know that this is not gonna be.
Okay, so anyway, this is, this was, there, there, we had a public hearing, no one came to testify. I want, I want to just mention to you that we, we voted to deny this application, so just please hear me out here, um, the, 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 um, the presenter, Ms. Simmons, presented saying that they, they needed to have this variance because the, that their 25 by 100 lot is, is not suitable for modern manufacturing, uh, they wouldn't have, uh, the ability for a freight elevator, or get trucks in and out, and she, uh, mentioned that there were several buildings with residential units in close proximity. Uh, the owner purchased the property for $350,000. Now, the committee pointed out that although there are a couple of residential, there are some residential units nearby, those, most of those, or many of those are rent stabilized, this would not have any rent stabilization, or any, um, any, any, um, uh, prohibition for this landlord to charge whatever he wanted. We also pointed out that there is a presence of a bustling commercial and industrial district directly across the street and in the nearby area. This is a thriving industrial, commercial, uh, district. So, the committee members agreed that the dwindling commercial light manufacturing industrial uses that remain must be protected because of the value that the community board has recognized that they provide to the diversity and vitality of our district. Um, and again, this is, this is, this property is in the midst of a functioning commercial district. It is not a, an isolated, um, you know, um, industrial zone, that's surrounded by residential. Um, so, the committee members felt that to give variances and allow residential development in, in areas that are, that, that are viable, uh, commercial industrial areas is actually not in the community's best interest, and that indeed, when we do that, we wind up having a, um, an artificial increase in the, in the, uh, cost of the, of the land, and ultimately, we won't, there won't, there won't, it won't be, there'd be a likelihood that we won't be able to have, uh, commercial and industrial uses because the land, speculative land value will be just too high. So, the committee voted unanimously to re- recommend denial of the variance. Fifteen people voted to not, to deny. So, if you vote, if you vote yes to go along with what the committee voted, you will be voting to deny this variance. So, I need a vote.
Sonia, make a motion.
Uh, but you take a second.
Sonia Vega, roll call vote, please.
So, remember, yes means we're denying the motion, the, the, um, the variance, denying the variance.
Yes is to accept the committee's recommendation to deny, correct?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Gina Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks, Eric Brusades.
Yes, yes.
Thomas Burrows.
Yes.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiricella, Teresa Censiata.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. I got you, Julia, thank you. Julia votes yes. Joe Goldstein, Joe Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Moisha Indig, Bosana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Thank you. Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Thank you. Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Libovitz, Yo Lo, Trina McKiva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Toby Moskovitz.
Wow, this is urgent.
Rabbi Needleman. Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Rackland.
Yes.
Thank you. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Thank you. Isaac Soffer, Robert Solano, Del Teague.
Yeah.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vietta.
Yes.
Simon, Simon, I'm getting, getting a slap happy. Steven Weidberg. Simon Weiser. Simon Weiser. Twenty-eight, yes, zero no, zero abstention, motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's it for me tonight, thank you, um, thank you.
Thank you, Dell.
Wait, I wanna bring up the Greck issue.
This is not safe, but I wanted to make a statement.
Wait, Bella, Bella, where I'm Yulip right now.
We're on committee reports, and Yulip is finished, Dell said, Dell said we're not gonna take a vote on that tonight, the vote is not due to September.
Excuse me, this is really putting this project in jeopardy, and I don't understand that. I have a right to ask, how, why after forty-some years would we take a risk with a new mayor coming in to take a multi-layered project like this and put it at a risk of new political people? We run around with open streets, and now we're not gonna take our one project that's our main.
December.
What? That's not the whole thing, it's gotta go through other steps, there.
Right, and then the new mayor doesn't come till January, you're talking six months.
I'm telling you, this is a big concern by all the people that are at Greck, who've been working on it forty-five years, we didn't just sit there for no reason.
The clock's already, the clock's already in motion, even if we voted on it tonight, the Borough President and City Planning and the City Council still are on the, the timeline of whenever it gets to it, so it might make it before the end of the year, it might not, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Why take a risk?
It's, it's on, it's on, it's on the timeline, Jen, we're going by timeline. Somebody want to say something? Somebody call my name?
I wanted to say something.
Eric Brusades.
Okay, Eric.
Make a motion to approve the Greck plan as presented.
I second it.
Motion and second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, it's been made in second, can we have a roll call vote on that?
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks, Eric Brusades.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
I'm staying.
Michael Chiricella, Teresa Censiata.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Abstain.
Erin Drinkwater.
Abstain.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins. Julia Amanda Foster. Julia votes yes. Joe Goldstein, Joe Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Bosana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Libovitz, Yo Lo, Trina McKiva.
Abstain.
Sante Miselli.
Abstain.
Toby Moskovitz, Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Rackland.
Abstain.
Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer, Robert Solano, Del Teague.
Abstain.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vietta.
Yes.
Steven Weidberg, Simon Weiser.
Thank you, Jared. Parks and Waterfront, uh, Phil Capodagno.
Phil isn't here, um, De'Allison, so he asked me to give the committee report, it's Trina, and, so, the committee met, we had two non-voting items that, that Phil did not put into the committee report, but I'll just mention them briefly. One, Java Street Development, which is the development between Java and India, presented their, their waterfront, the plan for their waterfront, um, so that the committee had a chance to make some comments on it before they take it to City Planning, they'll, they'll bring it back to us once it's gone through City Planning, and so it'll go through the committee and be presented for a vote. The other, um, presentation, that, the other agenda item, um, at Parks and Waterfront Committee that was also not in the committee report was Katie Denny Horowitz gave us a, a, a update about all the things going on in under, under the K, and there's great programming that you should check out, the North Brooklyn Parks Alliance website, and see, see what they've got going on, because it's pretty Herculean that they got that park up and running, and, and what they've been doing. The, the one voting item, um, was brought to the Board as new business by Ward Dennis, so the former Board, CB1 Board Member, and what he has asked the committee, or the, the Board to do, is to sign on a, sign on to a letter that's being sent to Mitchell Silver, the Chairperson, um, for the New York City Parks Department, um, to ask that the, um, that the, the grass, the grassy part of Bushwick Inlet, close between the soccer field and the river, be named for, uh, an eleven-year-old child that, that died suddenly in 2018. He was a, a boy that had played soccer on that field, and was, uh, he was very involved in sports in the committee, and he, he, tragically, he, he died, and what his family and what members of the community have, are asking that the Knoll, with the grassy area, be renamed in his honor. The boy's name was Seamus Wolf, and what they're asking is, they're asking the Parks Department to name that part of Bushwick Inlet in Se- Seamus's Knoll, in his honor. And the letter was sent to, to the Board as part of the committee report, and so people had an opportunity to read it, and what we're being asked, it's a letter to Silver, and there are a bunch of organizations that have already signed on, um, North Brooklyn Parks Alliance, Friends of Bushwick in the Park, the, the Youth Soccer League, the, the other soccer league, FC, FC Select, North Brooklyn Neighbors, and the Williamsburg Little League, and so can we get a motion for the CB1 to sign on as well?
Motion to approve, Steve Chesler.
I second the. Steven Iris. Roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Biamonte.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks, Eric Brusades.
Yes.
Thomas Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiricella, Teresa Censiata.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Thumbs up, thank you. Joe Goldstein, Joe Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Moisha Indig, Bosina, Bosana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Thank you. Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Libovitz, Yo Lo, Trina McKiva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Thank you. Toby Moskovitz, Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Rackland.
Yes.
Ella Sable.
Yes.
Thank you. Isaac Soffer, Robert Solano.
Yes.
Who was that, Mr. Soffer?
Yes.
Thank you. Robert Solano, Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Yes.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vietta.
Yes.
Steven Weidberg, Simon Weiser. Simon Weiser. Twenty-nine yes, zero no, zero abstention, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Madam Chair, thank you to Triva, uh, Seamus was part of our, our baseball league as well and the Williamsburg Sports League. So memory him and thank his dad. Uh, thank you for, for this.
That's, that's great.
Okay, does that conclude your report, Trina?
That does, thank you.
Thank you. At our committee, Santa.
Bella, you want to say something?
You can't say it now, Jen.
Okay, to take a moment, I'd like to make a, um, like a request.
I'm sorry, Bella, Bella, you can't, Bella, you can't say it now. You can't, I'm sorry, you can't say it now. We have, we have committed reports that need votes and we have to get the items voted on before we lose our quorum, okay?
So just a big comment I cannot make.
Uh, no, I need to get these reports out and get the votes on them. I'll call you when I finish.
But this is time sensitive, this is something that concerns the summer and that's why I, I was like, I haven't.
Doesn't need a vote? Doesn't need a vote?
No, no.
I got to get the votes out the way. I got to do the votes, I'm sorry.
He's gonna call on you before the meeting closes.
Did you say, Jen? Can I say whatever I wanted to say?
No.
No? And if it needs a vote, okay, yes.
I will call you, I will call you, I got to get these votes before we lose our quorum.
I'm ready, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Santa.
Okay, hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm gonna try to be very short, you can read through the minutes, the note of the report if you're curious. I'm gonna try to summarize, uh, uh, so yeah, uh, Agenda Point Number One, Block Association, Community Points of Contact. The Outreach Committee, uh, is continuing with the idea of trying to trigger and build the Block Association. As you heard before, you heard word Greenpoint Coalition and Greenpoint, they are listed in this portion of the community where I'm being involved, but I, we wish that this concept, this, uh, idea, which was kinda far more in effect in our neighborhood could continue, we could trigger and educate more people to get organized as a block or even to get point of contact. I had a meeting with the, uh, with the captain and the president, you know, and that's part also that idea of build the block that the police had and, and tried to get, uh, also, uh, things in coordination with them. And then other things we spoke about was, uh, maybe the possibility of doing, uh, enrich, outreach, uh, in person, uh, uh, at the park, maybe farmer's market and, uh, move around, like going around the, the neighborhood if it's possible. We have a tent already and doing some kind of, uh, outreach tabling out there. Uh, maybe other member of the board can participate, but we could pass pamphlet, we could, uh, provide information and a little bit demystify, you know, what the board is and, and maybe get in contact and that could trigger also this idea of, uh, helping, uh, block or neighbors that are not organized to be more organized. And then we went to social media, these were stuff we were carrying, uh, from other meeting, we didn't have a quorum in one and we couldn't vote, so you know, month passed away, so, and it was really a way out to, we can handle the Twitter account and this is something we're gonna have to vote and, uh, and we have a way, I will propose it with a motion. And we spoke about maybe open also an Instagram, but we decided that, uh, probably, uh, doing Twitter was enough. Uh, and Tiam Brooks was supposed to manage it, but he got personally busy. So one of the requests of the vote is that we're gonna use TweetDeck. Through TweetDeck, uh, uh, we can pass this information, uh, to the office of the board and then the office of the board can actually give, uh, power to the Outreach Committee. Uh, and so we don't need to be exclusively in contact with that, the offices. And the way, maybe we can find a way then to share and, uh, the posting of, uh, the notice that we want to put on, on the Twitter account. And, um, uh, yes, these, uh, these were some important, uh, points. Of course, you know, uh, we enter another conversation, which will generate motion, uh, to with the committee, some of which are very important, uh, also involve, uh, the possibility of going back to, uh, and, and inquire, uh, the possibility of going back to in-person meeting. We have seen today, we have very sensitive issue at the community, I believe there were, is something without, uh, other member aware, but, uh, there's something that, uh, is very sensitive and I believe we needed, a portion of the community are, uh, excluded by, it may be a very odd topic, an issue for the community that, uh, definitely we could take advantage of having back a meeting in person. And, um, uh, then, um, uh, yeah, there were other question, you know, about, you know, the world changes, you know, we're gonna face more of a crisis event and so we're gonna have, uh, definitely on the horizon, so this issue, you know, uh, possibility of exploring also alternative mode of meeting and communication for CB1. Um, uh, together, you know, with asking, uh, the clearance, uh, to the Borough President to convene to in-person meeting, uh, as soon as possible. Uh, and also something very important, because that was a question I came to the committee about the possibility of having hybrid, uh, meeting, um, we don't know exactly how that would be possible. Maybe that's something we should vote separately from the request to, um, uh, to the Borough President to convene in-person meeting again as soon as possible, uh, but definitely also exploring the possibility of doing hybrid meeting, it may be also positive, uh, uh, to engage community that may not participate in, in person. And, um, and then lastly, uh, so let's say we have four or five motion, lastly, um, uh, yeah, lastly was the motion to, uh, request to have the Outreach Committee members to volunteer outreach table at the farmer's market throughout the district once a month. Um, yeah, so, so now this is about the more, generally the idea of the motion I can read is kinda one line each motion. Uh, I don't know if it's possible, maybe we can summarize. I read each line of each motion and we voted all together. Uh, Jerry, is that possible?
Do you have a recommendation from your committee for any of this?
Yes, so one of the motion, number one, uh, uh, that's about the, the Twitter Deck, to use Twitter Deck, which is an application that will allow, uh, the Outreach Committee not to have the password, but the, the password will be detained by the board, but, uh, it will be shared with the Outreach Committee. So the board, um, a motion to the board to share TweetDeck cassette with Outreach Committee for posting official communication such as meetings and to establish, uh, formal and guidelines for posting content. So this is one, so.
A question, Santa, are you asking for all your committee members to have the password to their accounts?
Uh, yes, uh, it's generic because that's what the committee want, uh, but, uh, they.
I didn't hear your recommendation from the committee.
Uh, yes, we asking, uh, to the, uh, uh, to the entire Outreach Committee to have that access to that password.
What was your committee recommendation?
Was about that, to share with entire Outreach Committee.
Did you take a vote on that?
We, uh, all the, all the motion we made, they went unanimously in favor, the motion passed, uh, we had a majority. So all of them, I'm proposing, they were all voted by the committee.
Do you think it's necessary for your whole committee to have their account number?
Uh, well, actually, this is actually even better because we are, uh, we proud of what we are doing. We passing this, the power is in the hand of the office, right now has been in the hand of only one member, uh, Tiam Brooks. And Tiam was on table, so since March, there was no posting, which we haven't done very complex posting, but at least the meeting and the official notice, so we, we don't have to create content, we just replicate, taking content already assist on, on our, for our community board and we post it over there. It's the equivalent of, of a chaos.
But if every, if every committee person have, have access to the password, you have no control on when and what people post on their account?
You know, well, uh, I will have to say, this is something allowed, but the moment originally, uh, uh, me as a chair, the proposition, and you see is written on the report, and that's why there are two adjustments, was to Tiam Brooks, to Sante Micheli and to Steve Chesler. But that doesn't mean that we have another board member and we can decide internally to assign, you know, as a chair, I will assign to post. It's not, we, we're gonna have to establish some guideline in the meantime also. But what I can tell you, we are posting right now only existing notice, committee meeting with a link, with a PDF, that's what we're doing. So we're not, uh, uh, guideline will be produced, that's part of the motion too.
Can I just say, point of clarity, Sante, the recommendation was three people on the committee, you, Tiam and myself, not everyone on the committee.
Sure, but we also added at the end because there was the, uh, the entire Outreach Committee. There were two moments and there wasn't any, there was an, an introduction, maybe it's generic to the Outreach Committee, but definitely we have listed, we have listed these three people, were Tiam, Sante Micheli and Steve Chesler.
Well, you have said all the committee, I don't think it's feasible for everybody on the committee to have the password because like I said, you have no ask, you have no, you have no idea of what people are posting if everybody has access to it.
Oh, okay, then we can, uh, give it to these three people, which is Tiam, Sante and Steve for now. Uh, I would say that will allow us that we can share because somebody may be away and we lose the posting. We don't have, you know, uh, uh, somebody else could do it. And he proved that just Tiam Brooks, it wasn't sufficient, he felt it was too much for him to do that, he had some family problem. This could allow us to coordinate it and we could make it official through email communication. So it's not maybe, I believe the protocol which we're gonna put in place, it's not that we're gonna improvise and somebody decide one morning, uh, to do that. I'm, I'm sure also through the TweetDeck will know internally who is going to do the posting because everyone will be allowed, but again, uh, it's to the committee, but, uh, uh, everyone will have, right, Steve? It would be possible to identifiable, right? Each one will have an access code?
Yeah, everyone, each of the committee members, but yeah.
A dedicated access code too, right? Each person.
I think that's a good point, we need guidelines in place, I think, before, I mean, in theory, this is, this is, this is great, it's taking the burden off of the board office, but I feel like we have to have some guidelines in place for posting content, like, are we just gonna post the, the meeting notices or anything beyond that, you know, those types of things?
We're saying, but it says here the motion for posting official communication such as meeting. So we're not saying it to, you know, we're saying, I just stated now, we're posting official communication there already, uh, uh, at the Community Board One.
So are you saying that you want permission to post only Community Board meetings?
Uh, yeah, Community Board meetings, but I don't know.
You're saying, only, at this point, you're saying only, like, uh, you know, like, like Chesler said and I say, we need guidelines as to what you plan to post and who's supposed to post it.
We, we.
We're running into problems, we're going to run into problems with this.
We said, uh, uh, for posting official communication such as meeting, but.
Who's determining what's official and who isn't?
Well, if they are already posted by the Community Board, they are already, or, or they are an item of an agenda, I'm assuming it's already official, right? So to me, it's within the, uh, the realm of what is in the agendas of a committee.
So will you only be, you will only be reposting what Community Board has already posted?
Right.
I think we need something written on this, uh, I think we need some guidelines on this as to how you plan to handle it.
For the sake of time, can the, can the Outreach Committee come back with a, a communication or social media plan that clearly identifies when you'd be posting, how much, what it is that you post? Just like a traditional social media outreach plan to be approved.
Okay.
Thank you, please.
A second.
Uh, we already had access to the, to the Twitter account and we post.
Sante, 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 it's ten twenty. It's ten twenty and Tom still has to do his reports. What I'm saying to you is, can we not do a social media engagement plan, which like companies have, nonprofits have and say, this is who has the passwords, this is how much we post, this is the kind of content that we post? And then that's what we do, the end.
Yes. Santo, table this, table this item and come back to us with a plan and write it.
Okay, okay.
That was our plan, by the way, but, okay.
There, there was the plan and he was voted.
You're gonna mess around, you're not gonna get a vote, you got other stuff that had to be voted on, we got other votes.
Now, what I'm saying, Madam Chair, the only things I'm saying, I understand that, but we are doing a step forward because we had Tiam Brooks posting the meeting already. So if other board member don't recognize that we already, what happened, because Tiam Brooks, he, he has not be able, he said it's too much.
Santo, we understand all of that, table this and come back to us with a written plan as to what you plan to do.
No, I guess it's one year, I understand, Madam Chair, no problem, it's nothing, uh, okay. So next motion is to request the board ask for clearance from the Borough President to convene in-person meeting as soon as possible. And on a separate motion, I would say, uh, ask the board to explore how to create hybrid meeting. If there. So, uh, can we vote at this, uh, together or should we vote it as a separately, uh, two separate, uh, motion?
Uh, may I have a, I have a question?
Yes.
So how, how would you explore the ability to do a hybrid meeting? Um, what would that look like and, and who might you be working with?
I don't know.
Well, that's, uh, um, that's definitely what is one of the difficult, but he came up to the committee, that's why I was separating, uh, Kathy, uh, you know, definitely, you know, the in-person meeting to us to the Borough President, that's mandatory, you know, as soon as possible. But, uh, other committee member appointed and, you know, other organization on which they have ability, uh, to do hybrid meeting, you know? I mean, they do on a larger scale, the United Nations.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I was just thinking, I assume all community boards are thinking of this and so rather than duplicate efforts, it would probably be a good idea to, you know, work with other community boards, um, to save time for everybody, exactly, Willis, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, and this could also explore through the Borough President, you know? Is that something that the, the office of the Borough President, are they imagining the possibility of having hybrid meeting right now? But we need to have, uh, uh, a motion, so maybe a letter at this point, a communication, a proper request can be done because it may be advantages or maybe disadvantages, maybe, uh, impossible because of financial reason, because of the technological difficulty to achieve that, I, I don't have the answer. We love to have an answer generally as a committee, uh, in that regard.
We will, we will try to get back as soon as possible right now. Uh, Swinging Sisters is not available because as you know, they have a vaccination site there now.
And so, but what about the motion, Madam Chair?
Hey, how does that affect, how does that affect our meeting on a Tuesday night?
Can, can we send a communication letter to the Borough President? Because for example, uh, in Seoul, there was, you know, the Seoul rezoning and two weeks ago, they had an in-person meeting at the church, at the San Anthony Church, whatever the name was of the church, because it was a very sensitive meeting for the community. So, uh, I mean, it's already happening, so, uh, I know you, Madam Chair, you can have a, a, an answer precisely, but maybe the office of the Borough President, maybe we should write a letter, that was the request, uh, from the committee.
But I don't know if anything, I don't know if anything is being done as of this point because as you know, Community Board, Community Boards are off July and August. We are back here in July because we had to come in for some items that had to be voted on. So the Community Boards are off in July and August, so.
I have a question, um, does this boil down to, in, in essence, whether we actually want to be able to get permission to do hybrid meetings? I think at this point.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we might wanna at least, uh, have a vote or, or discuss whether we, uh, want to try to get permission because I guess at this point, the meetings are all supposed to be in person, although Jerry, I, I think you'd be better able to answer that. But I, I think a lot of people would like to be able to do hybrid and then the question is, well, what are the rules about hybrid? Can everybody just, you know, do it, come in virtually, just who has to come in person, who doesn't? But maybe we need to just have a sense of whether we're even interested in doing hybrid meetings.
So we have two things, one is Saint Nick says the building will be. So we have two things. One, as Saint Nick says, the building will be open in September, so we can meet. Now we just have to find out, can we do hybrid?
Right. Right. And do we want to do hybrid?
Right.
I think it's important.
Hybrid, hybrid is doing some meetings in person and some meetings online, so.
Or you have that are there and some people are also online.
Well, maybe we also need to define what you mean, Sante, by, by hybrid.
Right.
Well, I, I believe that the word hybrid, the committee meeting, and Janice, you also pointed that the word hybrid was about giving the possibility also to other, which I, we understand there are technological difficulty and financial difficulty, because we, you know, we need piece of machinery and technology in order to do that. So that I don't know if it's possible. But you, as a committee member, has raised and there was a will to explore and have some answer about hybrid is hybrid, is both. Somebody can stay at home and somebody will go there in person. Do you need the screen? Do you need the microphone? You either weigh? Or, I mean, we could have, could be go on YouTube, it could be on live stream. So that could be another possibility. I mean, there are so many, which I can't give you that answer.
We need, we need to explore how, what equipment we will need to go to do hybrid.
Right, right. So we need technology. That's why I say we need some technological expertise, you know, for the technician, that they are expert on the field. I'm assuming the Borough President could help that, the CD could help to give answer. I'm sure they have a capability, probably they have done something similar. That's what the committee may be useful on the long term, also in light of the emergency that we're facing. You know, that today could be, I don't know, is the COVID, is the pandemic, it could be a climatic issue that, you know, and so we're not taking on the last minutes by surprise by that. But the reality is that could also be that we may want to have some meetings still virtually because maybe less important, less sensitive and may demand less presence in person. So a committee could establish to have one special meeting to be still virtual. But definitely, the, the fact that we asking to go back to in-person meeting and be prepared, is it going to happen in September? Or we're going to be taken by surprise and we're not prepared for that would be good to know now during the summer.
Well, I think, I think, you know, they told us we could go back in person. I think we're prepared to go back to swinging sixties in September. So what you really want to know is can we send a letter asking community, can community board do hybrid?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, that's, that's good if that. Madam Chair, something to answer a little in more in detail, because we stay on this limbo of the, you know, senior center there. But do we explore another alternative possibility?
Santo, Santo, can I make a suggestions? Can you, can you, let's invite the civic engagement guy to your next meeting. I think it's Andy Toledo. So let's, let's invite the civic community engagement guy and let him try to hash out everything about hybrid and see what we can do, get his advice. I think he will, he will probably be the person to go to.
I mean, in September, if the, the committee too is.
Well, you can have a meeting before September if you want, you want to be ready for September.
Well, you know, that's, I believe it's been intense for a lot of, so I don't know how much presence we'll have in August at this point. But, okay, if that's, so.
Yeah, let's have the civic engagement person to come and talk about it. So let's take a vote on those. You don't need, you don't, I don't think you need a vote for the password. I think you need a vote to take, for the tables. And I know that there's other, you got two other committees that need a vote. So you need a vote for the, to put the tables outside and that's it.
Okay, then we go to the last motion is reverse to have outreach committee members volunteer outreach table at farmer's market throughout the district once a month. My personal idea was to start in the center a little bit of McCarran Park. I know it's a market, it's open, but maybe other market that been opening along the way, I know somewhere closed. But we can start maybe from their location and, and, and communicate it with other member of the board and see how we can work around that. Few hours once a month.
Okay, you need a vote.
Can I ask a vote from the board, please?
Make a motion to approve.
I second. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Stephen, Jan, can we have a roll call?
Do we still have quorum?
Let's have a roll call, vote and then know then.
We need a roll call on this?
I'm sorry, I'm a, I'm a little bit confused. What are we voting for? Because he said.
To put tables, to put tables outside and you about led it to a do outreach.
So he asking for member to volunteer?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Do we need a roll call on this? It's, it's a generic.
Can we have a roll call, vote please?
Gino Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows. Tian Brooks. Eric Brizades.
Yes.
Tom Burrows. Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler. Michael Chiracella, Teresa Cinciano.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Julia. Joel Goldstein, Joe Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Ozana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Liebavitz, Yo Lo, Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Micali.
Yes.
Toby Moskovitz, Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mario Dahmerk. Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Abstained.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser.
Yes.
You're locking? Oh, get out of here. I got to get out of here. I gotta go.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no, one abstention, motion fails. We do not have a quorum.
We don't have quorum.
Did you get Ryan? Did you get Ryan? She was there.
Gina came back.
Yeah, I voted, sorry, I was late to voting, but I was here. Is that, do I count? Jerry, I'm voting yes. I was, I couldn't get on. It's Mario Dahmerk.
I'm vote yes, I'm back. The computer system is really bad. It's knocking me off, so.
There's a storm in the area.
Is that it? Oh my gosh, I've been knocked off like three times.
Me too, three times.
Two. May, May four.
We got a bad storm in the area. Are you still on, Jerry?
I'm here. What am I waiting for?
You waited, they gave you some names that you missed.
I didn't miss any names. I called the vote. The vote was tallied and announced. Do you want me to recall the vote? I'll recall the vote.
Well, we have, I'm just wondering if we still have some quorum, because people couldn't get on. There are two or three people that couldn't get on. Do we still have a quorum? That's my, that's what I wonder.
The only way I could tell you that is if I recall the vote. If you want me to recall the vote, I'll recall the vote.
Okay. You just add the people that named there that spoke out the, out of the vote?
Okay, we got recalled to know whether we got a, a quorum or not.
Gina Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tian Brooks, Eric Brizades. Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cinciano.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Joel Goldstein, Joe Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Bosina Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Liebavitz, Yo Lo, Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Micali.
Yes.
Toby Moskovitz. Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mario Dahmerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer.
Yes.
Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres.
Abstained.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser. Twenty-eight, yes, zero, no, one abstention, motion carries.
Okay, we still have a quorum. Thank you, Santo. I think when you invite civic engagement out, I think all the board members should attend this meeting. So everybody can give their input as to whether they want, want to come back hybrid or not. So this way, everybody can voice their views, okay?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, um, environmental protection.
All right, thank you. So we, we just have, we just have two items. They're both on deadlines, so we, you know, we met. The first one was National Grid again. You know, the board recently voted to disapprove the, their upgrade of the Greenpoint Nat, Liquid Natural, Liquidified Natural Gas Facility and the trucking facility that it comes with it, that's very dangerous. And a year ago, we disapproved the, the pipeline, the North Brooklyn Pipeline called MRI. National Grid's in the middle of a rate case. They want a rate increase for over three years. One year's already passed and they're not allowed to raise it for that. And basically, the, we had, you know, had a consensus vote, essentially recommending that we submit to the Public Service Commission not to approve this, to reject this rate increase. They have no, you know, real concrete plan to comply with the state, you know, climate bill and local law 97. They've had a terrible impact on Newtown Creek, their responsible party for the Superfund site. They have lead contamination on the Greenpoint site. And they, they commence these projects before they had the rate increase. So they're just being really distrustful and disingenuous in doing that. And using this to justify expansion of another pipeline. So essentially, we, we voted unanimously to reject this rate increase and also to have the board issue a press release announcing that we're, you know, we reject this. So we need a motion to approve both items, both rejecting the rate increase and issuing a press release announcing that.
Sonia makes a motion, Sonia.
Vega seconds.
Sonia and Vega, roll call, vote please.
Steve, could you just repeat the motion, please? Thank you.
Sure, to, to reject National Grid's request for a rate increase over the next three years and for the board to issue a press release stating their, their position on that increase.
So to vote yes is in favor of the committee's recommendation to reject the rate increase and issue a press release accordingly. Gino Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tian Brooks. Eric Brizades.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes, yes.
Teresa Cinciano.
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Michael Chiracella. Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Joel Goldstein, Joe Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz. Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Bosina Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau. Marie Lianza. Abraham Liebavitz, Yo Lo, Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Micali.
Yes. Yes.
Toby Moskovitz. Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mario Dahmerk.
Yes, this is Katie, by the way, I, I say yes, I got kicked off.
Along with Katie. Yes, with Katie.
Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg. Simon Weiser. Twenty-five members voting, which is not enough for a quorum.
Did you get mine by any chances? This is Katie Denny Horowitz. I got kicked off right before you called on me.
I did, thank you.
What about the board chair?
We need twenty-seven for a quorum.
Then we had twenty-five, Jerry?
That's correct.
We need a twenty-six for a quorum.
What do we do?
Do we need twenty-five or twenty-six for a quorum?
We need twenty-seven for a quorum.
Can anybody call Ryan?
I mean, definitely, there is people just get kicked out and they come back in, so that's one of the issue right now. So I just saw icon disappearing and some, they came back, but.
It said that we have eighty members, so why we have only twenty-four, twenty-five? It said that we have eighty members, so why we have only twenty-four, twenty-five?
Jerry, can you see who voted?
We have forty, we have forty-seven members on the board at this current time.
Can you tell who's voted all night and who's no, didn't vote?
Okay, so nobody else was able to get back on, I guess.
Up here, there, right now, we have thirty panelists, so there should be thirty board member connected, from what I.
I understand how twenty-six is not a quorum.
What?
I'm, I'm looking at New York City, you know, is our rules, can we go over this? I feel like last time we went through this, twenty-six was the number we were looking for, for a quorum.
We have back twenty-five.
Yeah, but if we only have forty-seven members.
No, you're right, you're right, you're right. We have, we have twenty-fives. It's a twenty-seven, so half of uh, forty-seven is twenty-four plus one is twenty-five.
And there's twenty-seven people listed.
So we have twenty-five. Twenty-five people voted, the motion passes. We have, we have exactly twenty-five, we have twenty-six members present, the chair does not vote. So we have twenty-six members present at this moment. If nobody leaves the meeting, we're good to go.
Alright. Okay, let's move it.
One more, one more quick one. Uh, York Metropolitan Transportation um, Committee basically establishes report called the Transportation Conformity Determination, basically monitoring the air vehicle emissions. Basically, they're basically saying things are trending in the right way for nitrous oxide involved, volatile organic compounds. So basically, the committee agreed with that and it just encouraged them to um, to do, you know, just to, oh, the, the, continue in the, the right direction. Um, is continue what you're doing, like fleet um, vehicles converting to electric and non, so basically, uh, you know, the vote, we voted unanimously to approve them to continue um, you know, moving in the right direction, encouraging that. So I need a motion to um, for the board to submit a comment, basically um, encouraging that. Which is due on the, uh, July fifteenth.
I make a motion, Dell.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have to do roll call, Jerry? On this one?
It's not only on this one, Dell, it's the public officers law and the law department wants each member's vote recorded how they voted. I tried.
Okay, earlier, earlier, somebody said that it had to be for the land use, so I thought maybe it's.
No.
I was just trying to make a suggestion, but I forgot. So we, we wasting time.
Okay.
Roll call, vote please.
So a yes is to approve the committee's recommendation. Gina Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks, Eric Brusadis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella, Teresa Cenciata.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster, Joel Goldstein, Joel Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Indig, Ozana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Liebavitz, Yo Low, Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz, Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson. Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vieira. Maria Vieira. Stephen Weiberg, Simon Weiser.
I'm yes, I don't know what's happening, but it's yes for me, Jerry.
Okay, thank you, so noted. Twenty-five it is, motion carries.
Great, okay, just quickly, if individuals want to comment on both items, there are links in the committee report. And also a new business item, there's a, a Sheil Corporation, a resin factory in Greenpoint and Calium Banker is emitting um, toxic fumes and neighbors are, are mobilizing against that. So they're going to come to committee board for a formal presentation at a future meeting. Thanks a lot, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, SLA.
Okay, this is a, uh, I sent a written report. Um, I was not at the meeting. Bogdan gracefully chaired the meeting, which went on for five and a half hours. Um, four of the applications were only approved by consensus of the remaining members who survived the five and a half hours. Um, and then the, so the new liquor licenses, we have a number of approvals. Um, the first one was approved by consensus of the four remaining members, but all of that is, is that the, it was a partnership and one partner passed away, so the guy just had to change his paperwork, so that's a change in the corporate structure. Um, the second item, Brooklyn DT LLC, we had asked them to submit a new application, reducing their hours, having a security plan and meeting with the community organizations um, to work out an agreement with the community. Um, they're unable to submit a new application, they don't want to reduce their hours. Um, they couldn't reach an agreement with the community. The five-hundred-foot rule is triggered, so we're recommending a denial on that one. Um, there's Chewy's Cantina, we're recommending denial because they didn't show up. Uh, Megan Joy, we're asking postponement. Edith's was another one that was by consensus, but that is uh, replacing Dee's Steakhouse, so there's already a license at that location and Edith's eatery is going to be much shorter hours. Um, Aleva, we're recommending denial, they did not show up. Hot Metal Soup is in the former Garden Grill space. Um, and so we recommended approval by consensus on that one. Justin Aho and LFG Pizza both requested postponements. Um, Masquerade Brooklyn submitted a new approval with their hours reduced after meeting with us and also reducing their outdoor seating. Republic Bar also reduced their closing hours. Um, Rossi's Lounge is a postponement, Taqueria Ramirez is a postponement, and Trench Town Rock just did the presentation to the full board and they'll be coming before the committee at our next meeting. So those are the new licenses. Um, the recommendations are outlined in the report. Um, I'd like to do them all together.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the committee's recommendation.
I second Sonia.
I second.
Okay, Bogdan and Sonia, roll call vote please.
So Tom, the motion is to uh, approve the committee's report as written?
Well, it's got, I, I gave the amendments as of speaking and I'm going to give those corrections tomorrow because I got those applications all came in like at five o'clock.
Good, so you'll provide the, the updated report tomorrow. So it's to, to uh, to approve the updated report as written.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Tom, uh, Tom, can I ask you a clarification? Are you denying, you deny the sixty-six Greenpoint Avenue?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And can I make a comment on the ninety-four, even if you said postponement?
I'm gonna lose, I'm gonna lose my, my thing here, so let's move this.
Well.
Oh my goodness, yes, please, I have a five o'clock morning, but I'm six.
I'm gonna lose my computer here, so we gotta move.
We're gonna lose the quorum, please.
Okay, okay, roll call vote.
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks, Eric Brusadis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera. Phil Capone Negro. Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Cenciata.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Joel Goldstein, Joel Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Bosana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan. Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Liebavitz, Yo Low, Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson. Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer.
Yes.
Robert Solano. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vieira. Stephen Weiberg. Simon Weiser. I recall Ryan Coonan, I see she's back in the room.
Yes.
Thank you. Twenty-six members voting, twenty-six yes, zero no, zero abstention, motion carries, thank you.
On the re, on the renewals, the committee that met on the twenty, on the twenty-second of June, didn't reach the renewals until twenty to midnight, and there are only four members remaining. However, all the renewals have been announced at a prior meeting, they were posted at a public hearing, they were listed in the notice of the committee meeting. No public members signed up to speak regarding any of the new renewals. There was no objection to any renewal by committee members. No one remained at the committee meeting to speak about the renewals. And neither the ninety or the ninety-four precinct had any concerns or complaints regarding any of the renewals. And I, I um, checked with the whole committee by email and so with the consensus of the committee, I'm recommending that all the renewals be approved. The committee's recommending.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to make the motion to vote, to accept the committee recommendation.
I'll second that.
Who second?
Lisa Bamanthi.
Thank you, Lisa. Bogdan and Lisa. Roll call vote please.
Gina Argento, Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks, Eric Brusadis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella, Teresa Cenciata.
Yes.
Teresa Cenciata.
Yes.
Thank you. Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster. Joel Goldstein, Joel Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Bosana Kaminsky.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Liebavitz, Yo Low, Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz, Marty Needleman, Rabbi Needleman, Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Recklin. Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer.
Yes.
Robert Solano, Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vieira.
Yes.
Stephen Weiberg. Simon Weiser.
No.
Twenty-six yes, motion carries.
Alright, the last thing, there's three previously postponed items, there are group organizations that were set off to do some more work for us. Ed Brewing substantially reduced their operating hours, did much more outreach to the community and uh, shrunk their outdoor um, space. Roses on Kent um, submitted a new application that's reducing their closing hours. Um, and they did more outreach to the community. And Threefold Holdings is a transfer from, from a brewery to a bar or a bar to a brewery. Um, there's a lot of community opposition to them, but it's an existing liquor license that's just being transferred. But they did agree to remove their open restaurant structure that's on Kent Street, as well as the sidewalk seating on Kent Street. Um, so those three were recommending approval.
Is there a motion?
I would like to make the motion to approve the committee recommendation, please.
Is there a second?
Is that involved Three's Brewing?
Is there a second?
I second it.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote please.
Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks, Eric Brusadis.
Yes.
Thomas Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro, Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella, Teresa Cenciata.
Yes.
Giovanni Damato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T Willis Elkins.
Yeah.
Julia Amanda Foster. Joel Goldstein, Joel Gross, Katie Denny Horowitz.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesia.
Yeah.
Moisha Indig. Bosana Kaminsky.
Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Ryan Coonan. Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Thank you. Yo Landau, Marie Lianza, Abraham Liebavitz, Yo Low, Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Miselli.
Upstaying.
Toby Moskowitz, Martin Needleman. Rabbi Needleman, Mary O'Dommerk.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Recklin.
Yes.
Bella Sable.
Yes.
Isaac Soffer.
Yes.
Robert Solano, Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vieira.
Yes.
Marie. Stephen Weiberg. Simon Weiser. Twenty-six yes, one abstention, motion carries.
Our next meeting is July twenty-seventh at six-thirty. There are twenty-three new licenses listed on today's agenda. Um, I particularly would like to hear from Parks and Waterfronts regarding the McCarran Playhouse. Has that been worked at Park House? Um, they want a liquor license. I don't know if the Park House has been approved by the Parks and Waterfront Committee. There was some issue about it, so I don't want to be voting on a liquor license if I'm not clear what the Parks Committee has said about that Park House. Also, in the renewals, of which there are twenty-eight, please go through the list and see which ones you know. But one of them is Brooklyn Flea. So I'd like to hear from the friends of Marsha P. Johnson Park and North Brooklyn Parks about any issues or concerns they have about Brooklyn Flea's liquor license. So that we can communicate that to the SLA if we need to. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tom. Budget, Maria? The hour.
Right now, I'm driving, so I cannot even see the report.
Okay, we'll just say as written.
Can you please, as written, and I think from memory, we, we, we didn't have quorum. Books that were there, we approved the reconciliation that was submitted to us with a balance of two dollars and eighty-eight cents. I think that's what the balance was. And please forgive me if.
I like that amount.
Was that?
Okay, thank you, Maria. Okay, Bella, you have something you want to say?
Yes, I'd like to say, and this is like a request from the Parks Department that they should give us the pool yet for the summer season. For the half a summer is still available here and the pool is available. There's water in it. They are only, they are training lifeguards and the rest of the day, the pool is, and nobody attends the pool. It's under, it's unutilized. And we are asking and it works for us, for the women. They need it for their health. They need it for emotionally, psychologically and, and for the, physically. They need a nice, especially after COVID. We need a pool and we are in touch with them and we asked and somehow, I don't know, maybe they are partial. There's just something that they wouldn't budge and give us the pool. It's not that they need to put in water or they need to do anything extra. The pool is there and please, please, they should give us the pool. The women keep on calling us and calling and asking and begging, please give us the pool. We need the pool. And this is, this is what I need to say. And I hope that, but it would be nice if they give us for the second half of the summer. We were requesting for the, for the beginning of the summer, for the summer season since May. And, and by then, pools weren't open yet. Now slowly, everything is opening up and most of the things are open already. And there's no reason they should balk from giving us the pool. And please, if anybody knows of, look, or they can look into the matter why they're not giving us the pool. This is for the Parks Department and for the, for, for the, for the Human Rights Department. They should please, 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 finally, we should be able to go into the pool and, and so. Okay.
Thank you, Bella.
Can I ask a question?
I'd like to say that, yes, they should come, they should come back with an answer.
I mean, the whole community doesn't have the pool either.
That's what I was going to ask. Is it closed to everyone or are you still dealing with the issue of getting more?
Everybody. That's the worst.
You are not asking for more hours now. We are asking they should give us, as we.
You're not listening to him. He's saying, are other people using the pool? No, nobody's getting to use the pool right now.
Oh, so I'd like to clarify something else, that everybody is going to now, our McCarran Park is open, the beaches are open and everybody's joined the outdoors. However, for us, this pool is amazing and it solves our problem. We are not, we are asking for this pool because this pool works for us. The indoor pool works for us.
Okay, Bella, thank you.
Join all ladies from all the community, all ladies from all sorts of walks of life can come and join us. It's not only, it's not only for our community. It is for any and every woman that feels like swimming only between women. They are welcome to join.
And the men and the children for the seventy-two other hours.
Well, Vinnie, Vinnie Piccolo from Parks is still on the call and he can give us the status of when that pool might open. Vinnie?
Still here, somebody here from Parks?
He is, he is here. He also wrote some comments in the Q and A about a letter.
Oh, we have written many letters and many.
Vinnie Piccolo from Parks, he's, he's the Parks Manager in the district and he's holding, holding four of our Mary's away on returning leave. And he just wrote FYI, he can unmute. He can unmute. He could tell you if we unmute him.
Can we unmute him?
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I forwarded the request last month to Recreation. I believe they responded about additional hours. As far as this request, the center is not reopened yet, but I will forward your request along again.
Thank you.
Okay, but you know, this is time sensitive. We should enjoy the pool now, still, as it's still summertime.
But for everybody else that's on this, that's lasted this long at the community board, the fact that the Parks Department has refused to let the community have a say over what happens at that pool, I think is really a big issue. It's a city agency and they act like it's their pool and not the community's pool. So I, I think that this, and all the politicians right now, every single politician in our community has supported, even Lincoln Wrestler was supporting the women swim part of the pool.
It's interesting that the way.
Thank you, Jerry.
Supporting us and we couldn't come to, I mean.
The community board has supported, the politicians support. It just really is unbelievable.
Can I, can I say something? The next step is to ask for budgets.
Bella, let Ryan speak.
The next step is to ask for it to be an active part of the budget because why it's not open is because it's not funded. The Parks Department's budget was cut. This whole new budget that just got passed right before Fourth of July, there's no, like, we talk a lot about some of the other parks. But again, our, our politicians supporting when we come and ask them here does not translate into dollars being put in the budget to have the center be open and funded. And so, again, we have to look at the budget and if they're cutting the Parks Department, we have a million lists. And this is one of the things, like, I think when, I forget who does our, our community board needs statement. We have to prioritize and put in a list, what are our top ten parks budgetary needs? And again, I think that when most people, even on the community board list it, the, the met pool doesn't rank in most people's top ten, unfortunately. It ranks in my top ten. I live right here on Metropolitan. But to be honest, like, there's a lot of needs in the Parks Department budget and none of them are met. But we need to ask that there be more money put in the budget. That's if we really want this to change and not just keep repeating the same conversation.
Yeah, I think Ryan. Okay, Ryan, Ryan, when we ask for, when we ask for comments on the budget.
Look, the city never has money. I mean.
When we ask for comments for the budget, Ryan, make sure you get them in.
I have a question. This is Maria Vieira. May I?
Yes.
I'm about to go underground and I'm gonna lose connection. Are there any other votes?
No.
Okay, with that said, good night.
Good night, Maria. Thank you. Get home safe. Okay, let's just make sure that when we ask for comments on the budget, that people get their comments in. Okay, is there, is there still any speakers left for the public session?
I believe that was it.
Okay, thank you. And Noah left to sign up. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I made the motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, everybody's in favor. Thank you so much. Thank you for your patience and thank you for taking time to come to this meeting tonight. Enjoy the rest of your summer. We will call you back. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
God bless you all. Enjoy.
Enjoy your summer.
Bye.
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 Oh, actually, I was gonna add that it's really a disgrace that the, that the Parks is not giving us the pool.